All right, thank you all for coming. We'll start the meeting 6:30. I would ask that you all arrive and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the people.
The leaders of fire, the Americans of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in this world.
That's your problem. Thank you, and then we'll move to public comments. If anyone has a public comment, we would ask that you come up here and state your name and share your comment. Hope you got it. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, which is item three. We're going to use the time to acknowledge two businesses tonight. We'll have others at a later date. But the first one we want to acknowledge is Ross and Shelley Arsenal with the Beverage Mart. We will be reading a proclamation, but I just want to... A proclamation, you can't put everything in it. And for those who don't know, the Beverage Mart sold recently. Ross had sold it after 47 years. For those who don't know, being in that business, and I don't think I'm speaking out of school, I think Ross will agree with it, it's not an easy business, to say the least. And to be engaged in the business that the family was in for 47 years is amazing. I think we, as a community, as a city council, we also control the liquor control board, and we hear when there's violations. And I've been in this position for seven years, and Marty was there for six. I don't know, and Ross, you might be able to tell us if you had any violations anytime recently. I don't know of any.
Not recently. I had two in 48 years.
I knew there was an issue there. So that speaks volumes in itself. For those who, you know, follow what it takes to ensure that the liquor and beer is not sold to individuals, that it should not be sold, and to have two violations in 47 years is just amazing. So kudos to you, Ross, and your team, for sure. So I'll read the proclamation, and then what we would like to do is have a picture taken with Ross, you and family, and anyone you want, and the council. And with your permission, we'd like to put it on Facebook page, and thank you for your time. As I said, running a business is not easy, and to be in this sector as well is not much more difficult. So let me read this. So proclamation, Beverage Mart, January 13th, 2025. Whereas the Beverage Mart opened its doors on Lake Street, St. Albans in 1971, Ross Arsenal started in the bottle business when he was 18 years old, and later purchased a space in 1976 with 3,000 square feet of storefront. And whereas Ross has been a one-man rehabilitation crew on Lake Street and Spruce Street, purchasing nearby rundown vacant properties and removing them in an effort to revitalize the neighborhood. And whereas Beverage Mart is open 365 days a year and is known for its cleanliness, quality products, a vast offering, and exceptional service. What started as a deli quickly grew and transformed over the years as Ross added a redemption center, the 802 Spirits Agency, the wine arsenal, and the doghouse. Beverage Mart now boasts 12,000 square feet with multiple storefronts. And whereas Beverage Mart has become one of the premier retail shops in downtown St. Albans carrying thousands of variety of liquor, wine, and beer. And whereas Ross Arsenal and the Beverage Mart family have displayed their utmost commitment to its customers and guests to provide the greatest selection at best prices. Therefore, I, Tim Smith, as mayor of the City of St. Albans, Vermont, do hereby proclaim and recognize Beverage Mart in celebration over five decades of service to St. Albans, and will extend our deepest appreciation for their contributions and investments in our community. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and cause the seal of the City of St. Albans to be affixed the 13th day of January, 2025. So Ross, on behalf of all of us up here and residents of St. Albans and Franklin County, thank you for everything you've done for us. Ross, if we could get a photo with you. I know you're skipping town soon, so we want to make sure we...
Third day.
Is that...
Third day. But St. Albans will always be one.
So if you should... Anyone else that joins us? You want to slide over and get those in the background so the TV?
Yeah.
Fun place to stand.
One, two, three, cheese.
Beer. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Bittersweet. I will. We're just going through.
There's not many people I can tell by.
See ya, Ross.
Thank you.
Say away from that decom auction, too. Huh? Say away from that decom auction.
I got no room.
You know what I feel, and that was, Marty can relate to this as well. You know, as being part of the council, whether it's mayor or a councilperson, we get a lot of... I hesitate to use the word complaint, but we have a lot of conversations about a variety of different things throughout the city. And it's always nice to be able to recognize businesses like Ross's and others that we have in the past. And, you know, these are just good moments of representing the city. And so we have another one as well. Mary Ellen Jolly had texted me late this afternoon that they... She and Bruce Jolly had to go to Burlington for this evening for another... Situated for another event, I guess. But, you know, I'll present this to Mary Ellen later this week. But proclamation for S.B. Collins/Jolly Associates. Whereas in 1963, Emmanuel Pete Jolly purchased a business from Steve Collins, focusing primarily on the distribution of petroleum and oil products throughout Vermont and New York. The business was taken over in 1974 by Pete's sons, Bob and Bruce Jolly. And whereas Bob and Bruce Jolly continued to grow the petroleum business, and over time, S.B. Collins constructed 45 convenience gas stations conveniently located in high-traffic areas such as North Main Street and Federal Street here in St. Albans City. And whereas in 2009, Bob Jolly passed away, and his wife, Mary Ellen Jolly stepped in and now serves as the vice president of the company, committed to fulfilling a legacy of community involvement and giving back. And whereas in 2014, S.B. Collins rebuilt the Clarence Brown Gas Station located on Federal Street. The new facility was modeled after the original construction when Clarence Brown first opened in 1932. The station continues to be the oldest continuously operating gas station in Vermont and the only full-service gas station in St. Albans. And whereas historically, S.B. Collins is always raising funds for a variety of causes, including wounded warriors, muscular dystrophy, Little League, Bay Day, Great Race, participate in the Rotary Home Show, sponsored the Kingman Fest, sponsored the F.A. Drama, and making strides against breast cancer, just to name a few. Recently, the employees of the Jolly Stores raised $101,374.82 for the Cancer, American Cancer Society. Whereas the S.B. Collins/Jolly Associates has raised the bar when it comes to the quality of convenience stores in and around Vermont, providing quality jobs in the community and taking pride in cleanliness, customer service, and food offerings at their locations. And whereas S.B. Collins/Jolly Associates celebrate over 60 years of commitment to its 300-plus employees and building a stronger community in St. Albans and Franklin County, as well as a strong partner with the city's revitalization efforts. Therefore, I, Tim Smith, as mayor of St. Albans City, Vermont, do hereby proclaim and recognize S.B. Collins and Jolly Associates in celebration of over six decades of service to St. Albans, and will extend our deepest appreciation for their contributions and investments in our community. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and cause the seal of the City of St. Albans to be affixed this 13th day of January, 2025. So we just wanted to recognize those businesses as part of St. Albans, as part of who we are. And I think it's important to... I think it's important to recognize those long-serving businesses. 47, 50 years is quite an accomplishment. So I'll present that later to Mary Ellen, and I'll send a picture of that as well and share it for the Facebook page. So we'll move on from that to item number four, which is consider approval for water sewer allocation on 48 Lower New Street. You have a request before you. Marty, I have one question for you. So they've been there for a while. What caused the new request?
Change of use. They're adding more employees, more people to the building.
And the impact is minimal, appears to be. So what we're doing, looking for... Any questions for Marty or any comments? For those who are on where 48 Lower Newman is the brick building just west of Sticks and Stuff, right?
Yes.
It's on right by Stevens Brook. And NCSS has owned it for a number of years and utilized it for client residential.
Right. Yeah, it's more office, but they're going to have some more foot traffic through there. Was United Way, I think, and they haven't been in there in quite a while, so.
Case under right. Any questions for Marty on this?
Could she just repeat that for the record? That I was right?
I was right.
She'll put in minutes. So the re-alignment, the refiguration, if you will, was offered by Ross. Minimum change in terms of the whole scheme of things. So if anyone has any questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the application for wastewater water allocation.
I'll take that one.
Thank you, Trudy, Sarah. So we have a motion in a second. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, although the favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion approved. We'll move on to item number five, which is the implementation of state's ethics and requirements. So that would be you, Sarah.
It ends. This whole stack is not for this one item, I promise. All right. So last summer, Act 171 went into law. Act 171 implemented a statewide code of ethics for all municipalities. This supersedes any locally adopted code of ethics and sets a statewide standard for all municipalities. It went into effect on January 1st of this calendar year, and it is included in your packet. Covers items such as conflicts of interest, both perceived and actual, how to identify them, how to recuse oneself, and circumstances in which one could opt not to be recused when there is still a conflict, and what you would need to do to do that. It identifies prohibited conduct, such as directing subordinates or others to do something unethical, providing preferential treatment for somebody because of their wealth, position, or status, or because of a personal relationship. It prohibits misuse of position for personal gain or gain of one's family or business. Prohibits misuse of information. Municipal officers are prohibited from using confidential or non-public information for personal or financial gain. It prohibits misuse of government resources unless the use is expressly permitted. It discusses gifts and prohibits gifts with the intent to influence decisions or policy. Prohibits unauthorized commitments and prohibits personal benefit from any contracts entered into. This is in line with conflicts of interest information that we have previously had in our policies. Should not have anything surprising here. It requires us to post the code of ethics, which we have, that's posted on our website. We're required to post whistleblower protection. We've also done that. And we have posted a form and a process for individuals wishing to file complaints. We have three things, or we have two things to accomplish tonight and one piece of homework for all of you. The first is each municipality must designate liaison to the State Ethics Commission. The council may choose a municipal officer or one of its own. We're recommending that you appoint me as director of finance and administration as the liaison. This is the individual who will communicate on behalf of the city with the Ethics Commission. However, obviously, you are welcome to appoint someone else if you think there's a better candidate. The other thing that we need to do this evening is discuss the policy for investigating and enforcing complaints. We have taken the language from the LCT's model policy here, tailored it to be specific to the city, and proposed it for review and discussion. The homework is that all sitting board members or all city councilors before September of this year must complete a training and submit their certificate to Kristin so that we can keep track and make sure you re-up it every three years, etc. I am happy to answer any questions that the council has, or we can talk about the policy and designating the liaison.
I have a couple of questions.
All right.
How long's the training? What does it entail?
An hour. It is about an hour, so the training is a YouTube video that's 45 minutes long. I prefer to read than listen, so I put it on two times speed, and I read the closed captioning. So that took me about 25 minutes. And there's a quiz, and you don't get your certificate until you pass the quiz.
What's the standard?
100%. Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
Well, all right.
This right up my alley.
I probably should have led with this question. So usually, so this is from Montpelier, this is the work that our law members did, Montpelier.
That is correct, yes.
So why? Where did this, like, I'm not saying I disagree, but like, usually something happens and a new law comes up. Do you have any, like, what led up to this?
I don't. All I know is that in December, I had a calendar reminder that, oh, we have stuff to do. Other's.
Because I feel like I might know, but I don't know for sure, so I'm asking.
My opinion, and I don't know this for fact, but I think over the years, countless cases of embezzlement in courts offices and others.
Okay.
I think the issue with the Franklin County Sheriff has led to this moving this forward.
Tightening up a bit, okay.
I would say, I would say I'm not a fan of this. My question for you, Sarah, and you might not have an answer, is what happens if a board member on the downtown board or the developer chooses not to take, go through that? And if someone fails it, what are the repercussions for those individuals?
This is for all of the people, volunteers on the boards as well?
Not all of them. All decision quasi-judicial boards. So the city council, the planning commission would be on that list for sure. They're specifically called out. But I would say not, like, the energy committee would not fall under this. I'm not sure what the other, all the other boards are. But there's a specific list of boards, and then department heads, but not staff under, lower than a department head level other than assessor, lister, clerk, and treasurer. Clerk's a department head, but, and so is treasurer. But I would assume assistant clerk and treasurer would also be under there. So folks who manage the money. So it's, yes, it's a wide, it's a broad net, but it doesn't catch absolutely everyone. The training, the quiz at the end are yes or no questions. So I think if you fail it, you just keep trying until you get them.
Your self-esteem just takes a...
I think so.
Training until your ethics improve.
You try and there's...
Keep trying.
You can re-watch the video. You can re-watch the video, there's the code itself that one could read. There's like a summary about it on the ethics website. And then in the case of someone that would, that refused to take it, I don't have, I don't have an answer for you. I think I would have to ask the Ethics Commission.
Would this apply to our senators, representatives, governors also?
There is already a state, a state level...
They do a training and take a little quiz off?
There, that's correct, yes. Yeah, and that went in, either that went into effect last summer. When I first went on to take the training, it was only the state training that was available. Now there's a municipal specific one as well.
Is that one we need to adopt this?
We've already, the code of conduct, the code, the ethics is already in effect. It was in effect on January 1st. We have to appoint, or the council has to appoint a liaison by the end of this month, and you all have to do your training by September.
About the policy, Sarah.
Oh, the policy, that's, that's a now thing as well.
So we don't got it, it was given to us.
The code of ethics was given to us, that's correct. And then this policy is the model from the LCT, but we do need to formally adopt it into our suite of policies so that in the case that somebody does submit a complaint through our website, we have an official agreed-upon procedure on how we're going to look into it and what we'll do if a violation did in fact occur.
So that's the part we're approving, is enforcing.
That's correct, the policy and the, who's going to be the communication person.
My other issue with Sarah is, we probably have 20, 25 people in the room. We might get 15 different definitions of ethics. And I know you gave some examples. Is the general public going to see that as... How do they know what the proper definition of ethics is?
These are all excellent questions. The, the policy or the code of ethics itself is up on the webpage. I would hope that somebody going through the complaint process has familiarized themselves with what is and is not acceptable before going through all that effort. But it will certainly, the complaints will be reviewed in light of what's in the municipal code of ethics. And the Ethics Commission is always available for questions and to weigh in, but they have no authority over enforcing local complaints.
Is there already like a complaint process in place with the city of Shovon?
Yes, that was posted on the website as of January 1st along with the whistleblower protections and the code itself. And it's a form, it's, it's not anonymous. You have to identify yourself, and you have to answer a number of questions, and then sign it and submit it for review. By yours truly, unless you're complaining about me, and then he gets it.
It says it's every three years you have to do it.
And then every three years. So we'll be tracking that. We have a table set up to track everybody's certification date and to put out the reminders once every three years.
I got your list of things to do.
Yeah.
And that's another piece of, I mean, it's one more, it's one more thing to do. It's a, it's another unfunded mandate from the state. It, you know, it's no different than, you know, you're supposed to put food waste in your trash cans. No one checks. And I know, I haven't told them yet. I would ask, I would ask, tell me if I'm going to get you in trouble, Sarah. But I would ask that the council and building may table this. As I'd like to get Mr. Hawkins' take from a legal perspective as well. And I would like to get some answers to the question if someone doesn't choose to do it or fails it regularly, what are the impacts?
Do you get fired from your volunteer position?
Well, that's what I wanted. You might appoint Sarah so she has the...
That's where you get some attention.
Yeah, but continue to work on the policy.
Yeah, that would make me feel like we were in less trouble.
Yeah. Does anyone have questions for Sarah on this? Concerned for questions?
Sarah, I have a question.
We're the rest of this and this letter.
Right.
I feel that this letter, she put the others.
There you go, that's the key part of it there.
Nicole, you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, does Justice for Peace fall under that? Because they're with my Board of Civil Authority, Board of Beatmen.
Yes.
And I have to swear them in at the end of the month, so I should break their attention.
Yeah, and anyone who's new will have to take the training within 120 days of being appointed, elected, or hired.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do like the policy, assuming that we had changes, probably came in this way, but maybe we did, said may request not order somebody to leave. And it's still like, a lot of responsibility is still on us to decide what happens.
Right. And that's specifically in cases where the complaint is against an elected official. And so a group of elected officials doesn't have the authority to tell another elected official that they have to step down. You know, so that's some of the...
Are you saying they don't?
Right, in the, in the policy, under section 15.5, under enforcement, 15.5A is enforcement against elected officers. And there's a, there are four different points here. And it says the final one, so assuming that the complaint is made, the complaint is investigated, the complaint is shown to be legitimate, and then that comes up for enforcement, or what do they, they use a word in here that I don't, I don't really love. Admonishment.
That's what I had read.
When I was in kindergarten in Florida, we used to stand up and say shame, shame, shame to the naughty kids, and that's what admonishment always makes me think of.
Can we put that in there?
Shame, 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 with the finger and everything. I'll never forget it, but in 15...
You're perfect for this position, Sarah.
Yeah.
It impacted you.
It sure did. I didn't ever get shamed, but I was a forced shamer. Just real quick.
Can we check on that?
Yes. Yes. So it says upon a majority vote in an open meeting, the city council may request, but not order, that the offending municipal officer resign from their office. And this is in a case of an enforcement against an elected official. Enforcement against appointed officers falls under the jurisdiction of the city manager and the personnel policy.
It's that easy, though. All right, so if I understand where we want to go with this, I would... I would encourage the council to, um, to, uh, to appoint Sarah as the ethics liaison. We can discuss that for any need be. And then, uh, entertain a motion to table the, uh, ethics policy for, um, a little more review and discussion.
I move to appoint Sarah Lucy as the ethics liaison officer and sit on city to the state ethics commission.
Second. Motion by Eric, seconded by Chad. Any questions or concerns about? Or do you wanna check into her kindergarten record?
I'll bring my report card. I only had my happy face pulled once.
And so you still have the stickers on it?
That's very sad.
All those in favor of appointing Sarah to that position, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motion passes.
I move to table, uh, the adoption of the ethics policy pending further feedback.
Your second?
Second.
Second from Marie. So we have a motion, a second, a table, uh, item five C, which is the adoption of ethics policy. Um, any questions or comments on that? And then in the audience, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing on, motion passes. Sarah, thank you for your time and your work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'll see you at item eight.
We're gonna bring item six, Chip Sawyer, to the table. Do a second reading of zoning amendments for the multi-dwelling overlay district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us.
The second reading of this proposal to zoning, it does a couple of things. Um, first of all, the multi-dwelling overlay district is meant specifically to, as a tool that the, uh, city council can apply to any commercial or industrial property that you think might have, you know, for various reasons based on the commercial market, might also benefit from being allowed to have multifamily development on it. We, uh, applied this overlay district to the Fonda property, and that's one of the reasons why we're able to build the senior housing that Cathedral Square is constructing and also seek a developer to build a housing on the rest of the site. And, uh, we're proposing that we now add this designation to the former USCIS office on Laura Weldon Street. And also to the, um, former police station, current fire station property that the city owns on Laura Weldon Street. We think that there are a couple of properties that, you know, maybe might spur some redevelopment or conversion of an underutilized space with this new zoning. But at the same time, and one of the beauties of it is it does not remove anything that the properties currently enjoy under their service industrial zoning anyway. Like, it adds, it doesn't take away. The other part of the proposal is that, um, based on feedback from some developers in terms of large, larger multifamily developments, and that's sort of what this zone's aimed at. We, um, or the planning commission and I have put forward a proposal to allow the DRB to waive some of the parking requirements in the multi-dwelling overlay district. Um, specifically only requiring one parking space for every apartment that's a studio or a, or a one bedroom.
Questions for Chip?
Uh, quick one. Were any changes made from the first reading?
No.
Do we have any requirements in there for like larger multi-dwellings to have a number of visitor spots per number of residences?
That's sort of baked into the one and a half requirement for most apartments. And one, one, one of the ideas behind the parking proposal is that once you have a multifamily that's, you know, thirty units or more, you start to get diminishing returns on your parking supply. Um, you end up sometimes requiring more parking than will actually be used. This allows the DRB to consider that specific case. It doesn't have to agree, but to consider requiring only one parking space for those apartments that are one bedroom or studios. So if someone comes in with just a ten unit, which is the lowest you can build under this overlay, so if they come in with just the bare minimum of, of ten, ten unit building, the DRB might say, no, you know, the one and a half spaces is probably gonna be used. But if it's a thirty or forty unit building, you might be able to make the case that some of those units are only required to have one parking space.
What would you, what's, so the smallest maybe could be a ten unit?
Yeah.
What's the biggest? Like, are we talking about potentially another?
Um, there is a, there is a density limit.
Another Lake Street?
There is a density limit in the overlay district. I actually forget what it is, but there is one. Um, I think it might be, it's something along the lines of what we would allow at Fonda, which is going to be eighty-seven units by the time all is said and done.
This doesn't make any change to that though.
And doesn't make any changes to that. So.
And there's no like brownfield or anything like that, but in that sense, there's no problem?
Well, there might be, but that would be something undertaken by the developer as part of what they'd have to do on the site.
For prior, prior to development?
Yeah.
All this, this is just about parking tables, the ratio between spaces to units. And you get over a certain size, on this scale, you'll be. Any questions for Chip on this?
So this is just to entice the developer? There's nothing?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Go ahead. Just state your name, please.
Yep. Christine Doherty, uh, resident here in St. Albans. You know, I certainly, uh, support, um, higher density development here in the city. I think it's great for the economy. I think it's great for the housing needs that we have, but we have overlays like this where the restrictive, um, really only providing, you're, you're really putting up a bare minimum or putting a bottom there, a minimum of ten units, um, and allowing upper levels. Um, that's a little bit restrictive, allowing different types of infill to happen. Uh, the other side of that too is this seems to be a little bit of a pocket development, pocket zoning. Uh, I'd rather see more regional zoning that's happening. So we wanted to allow, um, multi-dwelling, um, developments that are happening and broaden it out. There's three parcels that are specifically being zoned under this. And that seems very targeted, um, and possibly beneficial to those parcel owners. Uh, maybe not as equitable to other parcel owners, uh, throughout the city. I would encourage the council to maybe send us back to the staff to have them look at the zone and rezone a larger area of the city to allow more dense development, if that's what the council's looking for.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a very strategic tool that's being used for properties that are unlike, that have had an intensive use. So, so having a large multifamily development might not be much of a change from what has traditionally been done on the property in terms of the people moving in and out. Um, but in a case where that property is probably unlikely to be fully utilized as a commercial site anymore or an industrial site. And the planning commission's looking at options for increasing, um, or looking at densities on a neighborhood basis for a more general type of neighborhood residential development. But this is more about being an economic development tool as much as it is a housing tool. And getting as much, uh, property value as we can out of these particular, uh, properties.
Can you think of any other, you know, when you were talking, I was thinking like where, like in my neighborhood. There's like no place in my neighborhood, it's too dense, that I could think of a eighty unit building going up. Like, are there other properties in the city that you can think of, Skip, that would also serve this development need?
Well, we allow this kind.
In regard to the.
Yeah. I mean, we allow this kind of development already at an even higher density in the central business district.
Okay.
And then you have, um, the, the, uh, business district just outside that going along Main Street where there are some higher densities allowed. And then this is the service industrial district. It's, uh, it's more of a, it's not really meant to increase. This, this, this is a very targeted zoning rule specific to properties in the service industrial district for the most part. That, um, could be, could realize having, having the multifamily development instead. It's not, you know, if, if there's an effort about looking at higher residential densities elsewhere in the city, that would be a different effort.
I know the state makes some rules around.
Yeah.
Like, which we really love because.
Yeah, the state basically.
All our neighborhoods could have, you know, five unit apartment buildings in our big backyards if, if the state had the right.
Yeah, the state rule basically, um, like, like doubled or maybe quadrupled the allowed density across our neighborhoods based on what we had before. With their, uh, with act one eighty, well, with act forty-seven and act one eighty-one.
So Chip, to recap, this just focuses on the service industrial district and recommends some of the large parcels that have development potential that could benefit from a reduced parking requirement over a certain size of units.
Yeah, and it allows, yeah. And it allows that residential use. And at the same time, it does not take away any of the service industrial uses those properties could also pursue.
I would say it's not cast as a stone, but you can always add to this.
Yep.
So if somebody has a parcel that they would like to add, add it, they can bring it in and make the same request.
Yeah, they could bring a proposal, they could make a request before the planning commission.
So this is starting on that.
Mm-hmm.
Any hand up?
Uh, yes. Uh, Laura Aishen, I just had a comment on like the narrow question of one's parking space versus one point five parking spaces. I, I do think that it's a good idea to at least look at that for a lot of the buildings because, I mean, not only will some of those studio and one bedroom apartments just have one person or like one person in a minor or something like that. But I do know a lot of people in St. Albans who are like a couple, but they just share a car or may not even have a car. So I think there are a lot of people who don't necessarily need the one point five spaces. Especially if it's near somewhere where there's like some street parking where their visitors could park. I, I think it could end up being a good policy. That's my comment.
And the state, state now with, what was the state rolling up parking?
Uh, the most we can require is one and a half spaces, um, and we can only require one for any development that's within a quarter mile of adequate public parking.
Any other comments? We have a motion, we don't have a motion, but we'll, we'll move on to, uh, seven, which is, um, discussion about, on what was presented at the second meeting. I move to adopt the zoning amendments for the multi-develop, uh, multi-dwelling overlay district.
I'll second.
Second by Marie. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Um, moving on to item number eight. Sarah, you're back. So Sarah, you're touching on, uh, short-term borrowing first for fifty-four Main Street?
Yes, please.
Followed by the whole part of Montour, uh, project.
Correct. So the first thing here is a request for the council to authorize short-term borrowing up to two point five million, which will be used to support the cash flow needs of the redevelopment project at fifty-four North Main Street. As a recap, the city has partnered with the bank to redevelop and sell fifty-four North Main Street. We've partnered with the bank so that we can leverage federal and state historic tax credits to reduce the cost of the overall, overall project of about seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars at the end of the day. Uh, this property will be sold once it's finished, and the combination of those two things will satisfy the majority of the cost. What we have is a cash flow timing issue, which is the work is being done now. Those tax credits and that sale are in the future. And in order to pay the contractors, pay the invoices as they come in, we need additional, we need access to capital to do that. So my request in front of the council is to authorize short-term borrowing for the redevelopment at fifty-four North Main Street of two point five million. We would draw it as we needed it, um, and, and repay it once the project is complete. Are there any questions?
Do you anticipate the building being sold for two point five million dollars?
I do not. I, oh, we anticipate a spread. I, I, um, there's, that's the cost right now that we have to front. And then we'll get the tax credits of seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. It all depends on the final cost.
Because it's a historic building.
That's correct. Those are, uh, part of tax filings, so that's depending on when we finish. And then the income tax cycle is, there's going to be a delay between the end of the project and getting those credits in. And the project will also sell at the end. Uh, we anticipate needing to convert some of this to a long-term capital projects note at the end. Uh, we're hopeful not, you know, maybe a small portion, three hundred, four hundred thousand, I don't know. I don't make any promises, cause we're still in the early, early days of the project. But, uh, the historic tax credits are a percentage of what we spend, and we'll get those at the end. So we, it's a timing, timing issue right now that we're trying to work around.
Just to clarify, then, Sarah talks about the sort of tax credits, as a city, we don't pay taxes. So the cred, the credits are sold to a bank which can utilize them, which generates cash to go offset costs of the construction. So you hear the word credit, but it's, there's arrangements, but banks will have to buy, it's a slight discount on what the actual value is, but they, they still make money out of it, using them as credits.
Are we working mostly in, there's seven units, right? Are we working mostly in units right now, or?
Yeah. So there's, we're just, Sarah, working its way to the council to sell the building to the restaurant group, uh, and then the investors who bought the building. The, uh, I forget what the question was, Chip, but.
We're working mostly in the units, right? Now working in the commercial space mostly?
We're working mostly in units now. We're about to begin working in the commercial space. So we're starting up, but we're gonna be, we're really looking into the residential units first and then starting the commercial space.
And the people that are interested, they're, they're, they want the final product.
Yeah, I mean, they were delayed a bit in getting into, they're really interested. Um, we've been delayed in getting into the commercial space because of some of the design considerations about what they want and how big is the fridge and where's the food go?
And it's market rate housing?
Market rate housing.
And why do you expect that to purchase it here?
Uh, there's, we got a draft today and, um, we're leaving, um, the restaurant group tomorrow. So, um, potentially, is that one of your next moves or?
How long, um, do you anticipate working on it?
Eight months.
And the restaurant portion, I think it was pretty well set up, is it not, from the previous?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the investments that were made in, in previous business carried forward. There was, you know, not all of them good, but, you know, we were able to attract a restaurant because of the investments they made in previous.
Eight months from start date or from today?
No, we didn't make that, you know. And there were a series of challenges. The reason the, they were never adding upstairs was it was a huge, um, electrical problem. And, you know, we had to literally figure out how the drill sections came in in Main Street to get power to the building, the right type of power. So all of those precluded a private developer from doing it. We had, we had the city boys' power to figure out how to contact these, or if you had access the right way to run the power and all that. So once we've got that taken care of, now some electrical apartment.
With two companies, right?
Here, we have my response.
Chip, you said seven units, it's eight.
Eight. Undertain a motion to override short-term borrowing for fifty-five North Main Street?
I'll second fifty-four.
Fifty-four, thank you. Fifty-four, thank you.
Second.
No, you're, you're first, Woody.
Oh, I'll go second.
Second, Woody. So, uh, any other questions or comments, Sarah? Any in the audience? Seeing now all of the favor of the approval of the short-term mortgage, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on, Sarah, to the combined sewer project, uh, for Houghton Park.
Thank you very much. So last April, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, actually, the council approved our application for this planning, uh, loan with, through the bond bank, through the, um, state revolving funds to, uh, for the Houghton Park C S O. We are now at the point where it's been approved by the bond bank and we were looking for final approval from the council and some signatures. Chip, anything to add on this one?
This is a forgivable loan for the planning and design phase of the project. We'll talk about the next phase later.
Yeah.
Planning and design will ultimately give us an estimate of the project house?
But we have that.
What is that?
It's, um, it's in my memo. Right now, we're working, um, for the bond, we're looking, working with a conservative estimate of six point eight million total. There's other funding that we'd be spending on that. And the rest will be part of the bond proposal before the council tonight.
For now, though, Sarah, you are requesting, uh, approval for the revolving mortgage from the bond, right?
Yes, the planning loan for the Houghton Park C S O, please.
Entertaining a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to authorize planning loan for Houghton Park C S O.
Motion from Trudy, seconded by Chad. Any other questions? They'll be to Chip or Sarah. Audience, any questions? For those who may not be familiar, actually, Marty, why don't you give an overview, probably tell us about it, of why we're looking at you like this?
This project is going to, if it comes through, we'll put five hundred thousand gallons worth of tanks underground on the south end of Houghton Park that will allow the storm surge to stage in that tank system as opposed to overflowing our system. And then, once the storm passes and our system dials back down, we can release this at a regulated pace into our system. So lower Weldon, Edward Street is the lowest point in our system. And anytime we get a storm surge or anything, that's where it always floods. Typically having to shut down that intersection.
And if it, um, if the amount going into the wastewater plant is too much, what happens?
It overflows, it gets a primary treatment, but doesn't get the full treatment. So this will allow us to keep that, to give it a full treatment.
And, uh, five hundred thousand gallons is enough compared to what the overflow would have been historically?
Yeah, we hope so.
We've got a full deep dive coming up on this.
It's fluid?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming. Um, you're saying developments in the future?
I was just saying, in terms of additional, Chip's got a presentation under, uh, downing, I don't know. So we'll talk further at that point.
Does anybody have a motion in a second?
Yep.
I'll refer my member.
Yes, I have a motion.
I second.
Trudy and Chad, thanks. So all those who say aye, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Sarah.
I'm looking for everyone to sign on the blue tabs and just you, Mr. Mayor, on the red, please. Thanks for.
And are you done, Woody?
Nope, I'll be back.
Uh, so we'll move on to, uh, item number nine, which is a review of council goals and objectives. We meet, uh, internally to discuss, uh, what all of us as council people would like to see moving forward. Improvements in the community, improvement in the wards, uh, improvements in programs. So, uh, in the packet, we all have an update on what all those were. We have copies of them.
Uh, I don't think, I think we just got copies of the budget, we didn't cut those out.
So most of these that we, uh, had, uh, put down on our, uh, objectives and objectives have been addressed, but why don't you give your input?
I mean, that's pretty much it. Eighty-six percent of them, I think, are done. Uh, the balance are in the process. Good examples, the Ralston project, which we were just talking about, uh, is in process, so. Uh, I just wanted to get this in front of you as we begin, uh, looking at the budget, um, and just having a sense of what you got accomplished last year and if there's something else that you want to put on the list for next year, think about that when you do budget.
Any thought on that, folks? Do you have any thoughts on whether we will be meeting on this again? To set new goals?
I think usually we do it, um, we kind of do it as needed, right? You know, I, um, you know, Chip asked if he could take a vacation. I said, well, look at the goals and objectives and it looks pretty good, so. I think usually after the election and town meeting, that's a good time for us to reset.
Motion for the people in the audience, one of us, um, one, two, and three, I'd say we think we're.
Sure.
Public safety probably be a good one.
So there were five goals and public safety. One goal, five objectives. The goal was to deliver police, fire, dispatch and emergency management services that are consistent with the council's vision. And there were five objectives. Launch police coverage for St. Albans Town. Uh, launch an expanded drug enforcement unit. Launch the Georgia Dispatch Tower. Continue to expand the regional dispatch center and continue to strengthen and protect officer recruitment and retention programs. So there's really good examples of all of those that have come, come to fruition. And at the other end of the spectrum, um, we've got the economic development, uh, program. Uh, the goal there is to continue to make St. Albans a community of distinction. And there were four goals, four, four objectives. Select a developer for the workforce housing units, uh, at Fonda. Uh, that's nearly done, but we haven't brokered that agreement. It should be, uh, in front of you in the next month or two. Uh, complete the land acquisitions and brokered the agreement for the Bellevue process, project. Uh, we've completed the land acquisitions, but, uh, we don't have the developer selected yet. Develop a program or partnership for regular entertainment at City Hall. It's one of the few in here that I suggested should be put on hold. Um, that's proven to be more expensive, uh, and as you'll hear in the budget, it's all about police, so. Um, we put that on hold indefinitely. Doesn't mean we can't use it for that purpose, we're not in a position to fund it. Uh, and complete the Ralston redevelopment. And as discussed a minute ago, that's almost to the rescue.
Thank you. Council, any questions for a city manager? Audience, any questions? Okay. No, uh, no more needed, so thank you for that, Donald. So we'll move on to general fund budget. The development of it. Sarah, you are back.
Come back.
We're gonna cover, uh, five items.
Yes.
Finance committee comments.
Who wants a budget, sir?
Everyone.
Yep.
Well, Sarah, while you're getting it all down, I will turn it over to Mr. Hawkins. Sarah, talk us on the process.
Finance committee did a deep dive with the, uh, with staff, um, looking through to make sure that the, uh, we answered the call from the city voters, uh, and uh, from our partners in the town on the joint police force. Uh, came up with a pretty good budget. I think, uh, kudos to them, uh, pulled the line and do what we needed to do to enhance the police department, where this, this budget is exactly on that highway. Um, so I'll save my other comments, uh, until Sarah gets through. We had put a, an hour, an hour and a half, two hours.
Yeah.
So, um, it wasn't one where we just glossed over it, so, um, uh, listen to what she has to say and comment on it at the end.
Thank you, Tim. I am. Get myself situated here. All right. So my plan is, so you have the general fund budget in front of you. It starts with my memo and it follows with a summary and then a costing center by costing center, uh, detailed budget. My plan is to start here with some summary data and then we'll go into a department by department overview. Since we met with the finance committee last week, we have decreased the proposed budget by one hundred and forty thousand dollars. We shaved a full percentage point off the bottom line and we've reduced the impact to the tax levy by three tenths of a percent from the initial proposal. This budget in front of you reflects the community's top priority of public safety. To that end, uh, recall that the police and the dispatch budgets have been reviewed and adopted by the joint police board. Those are included in this budget. The total proposed expenditures for the year are fourteen million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. This is an increase from the FY twenty-five budget of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, four point one percent. Of this five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar increase, seven hundred and ten thousand of it is related to police and dispatch, which means that all other costing centers came together to propose net reductions of one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We have done this by, uh, not filling vacant positions. In FY twenty-five, we had initially proposed an economic development position and that got put on hold this year. It has not been filled and we have removed it from the budget in FY twenty-six. When we go department by department, you'll note that we have slightly increased the local option tax transfer to the redevelopment fund so that we can continue to support and engage with the economic development programs that we've started, uh, and that the community continues to come out looking for. We also chose not to fill, uh, the building inspector position in the fire department. Instead, we reshuffled some duties between existing staff so that that program can continue but that we can realize some of those vacancy savings through attrition. Lastly, we deferred the purchase of the oldest, or the replacement of the oldest public works truck until next year uh, to pull back on a debt impact in the current year. Funding for this overall expenditure number comes generally from property taxes and non-tax sources. The property tax increase is just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. That's nine point five percent. Know that that is a large number when you first look at it. Um, I hope you'll all stay with me through all the details so that you can understand where that all comes from. Seventy-two percent of this increase is related to that police and dispatch budget. And the remaining twenty-eight percent, or one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, is attributable to all, attributable to all other costing centers. All those other costing centers, all the non-police costing centers contributed to a net reduction in expenditures, but we also had a net reduction in other non-tax revenue sources, primarily one-time debt issuances in twenty twenty-five to support capital purchases. And so even though those non-police expenditures are down, the non-police tax levy is slightly up, if that makes sense, the way all these puzzle pieces fit together. I'd like to draw your attention in the memo, please, to page two, the bottom of page two and the top of page three. There are two pie charts. The first shows the budget summary by, uh, the budget summarized by costing center. As we have been talking about public safety being a top priority and being one of the drivers in this budget, you can see that forty-nine percent of this overall budget is costs going to support police and dispatch. At the top of page three, it should come as no surprise to you that also the majority of our costs are personnel-related. Fifty-six percent of the total budget, it relates to salaries and benefits, forty percent of that being wages, sixteen percent benefits. So fifty-six percent to personnel costs. To put this in perspective, our second highest costing category is debt service and that comes in at a whopping ten percent. So number one is fifty-six, number two is ten. So I hope that drives home the point. We are very, uh, it's a personnel-driven budget. Quickly, before we get, um, into the individual costing centers, I do want to touch on what we have proposed for capital spending. We have come down, we've decreased our proposed capital spending from last year by four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, capital spending is actually seventh in line this year. It had been third or fourth last year. We are looking to continue replacing the, uh, self-contained breathing apparatus and fire. We do those a few at a time every year. We are proposing, uh, one marked car and one unmarked car in police. The marked car would be a lease purchase, uh, and we have been, and that would be also the one debt item of the year. We're proposing to maintain the annual paving program at three hundred thousand dollars, which is the FY twenty-five level. And then Public Works has requested a roller for patch paving, so instead of renting one every time, we would purchase one to use. The police cruiser is the only new debt item, though as you'll hear in the debt service section, I am proposing that we start to pay down on the debt we have outstanding on the Weldon Theater, uh, as we go forward and determine what the plan for that building is long-term. Flipping over to page four of the memo, at the very top, there's a bar graph. This bar graph shows the net reliance on city property taxes by costing center. So certain costing centers rely more heavily than others on property taxes, though all of them bring in their own non-tax revenues. I'd like to draw your attention to police and dispatch. We've, uh, so far, I've talked about that being our focus in the budget and that being the largest cost driver. Even so, the net reliance on the city tax rate by police and dispatch is still less than FY twenty-two levels because of efficiencies we've realized with our collaboration with the town. Making our way down on page four, I have put in, um, a, a projected tax rate comparison. Now, the first thing I want to tell you is this tax rate comparison is wrong because we're in the middle of a reappraisal. So you calculate the tax rate by taking the total voter-approved tax levy, dividing it by the taxable grand list to come up with a tax rate that then gets applied to the assessed value of each property to produce a tax bill. We do not know the denominator because the reappraisal is not finished. So let's assume in a world where the denominator is the same as last year, the grand list doesn't change. The impact to the tax rate is the same as that higher, high level, uh, or that top line impact to the property tax levy of nine point five percent. This is two hundred dollars on a two hundred thousand dollar assessed home. To put that in perspective, one hundred and fifty-six of that is for the police, the public safety component, and forty-four dollars is everything else combined. So this, uh, when the bills do come out, the tax rate will look different because that will have the reappraised grand list. Uh, but just to give you an idea of where we might be headed, that's what I have here for you.
Is the, is the timing on the appraisal on time?
Yeah.
It will be to accommodate this?
Considering you have any draft values in February or March, it's on schedule.
I'm going to move into sheet by sheet, but I would be happy to take any high-level questions you might have before we do that.
Sarah, as you go through, um, let us know the ones that are gonna be falling off, the expenses that are gonna be falling off this budget from to next budget.
I'd be happy to do that.
I can go through.
Great idea. Okay?
It's not a high level, but just, um, as we have these conversations, I think we need to remind, uh, our constituents that our budget increase from last year was point six percent. I think we need to reevaluate our constituents that our budget increase from last year was 0.6%.
That's correct, the tax levy increase is 0.6%, and I believe it was, it was pretty low the year before as well, 2-ish. I don't have that number handy.
If you were to look at it over a two-year period?
True. Average is about five, if you look at it over a two-year period. On the tax levy itself. Alright, so now we're on to the big papers. Page, in the numbered page seven is our overall summary of revenues and expenditures, which I've covered in my general discussion. And so we're going to jump right into page eight, and I'm not going to cover the microphone this year. Page eight is a summary of our general revenues. Oh, I'll let you all catch up. I've just been flipping through this so right, so much. Alright. No, you're almost there. Go, just flip that first big sheet. So our general revenue costing center is all of our revenue sources that are not specifically attributable to costing centers, and then other than property taxes. So this is interest and penalty charges on delinquent taxes. The water and wastewater funds contribute for the, for the use of City Hall and the Public Works garage. We have pilot payments, and a railroad pilot. Pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes, so state-owned properties. The state of Vermont comes up with an amount to pay us in lieu of property taxes. That's reflected on this sheet and our local option tax revenue. The local option tax revenue has been climbing year after year, and I think that we are projecting to come up, come in over $700,000 in this upcoming year. The revenue is broken down by its intended use. On line nine, I would point out that our local option tax redevelopment transfer, we're proposing that at $50,000 this year. This is, as I mentioned, an attempt to continue funding for the economic development program now that we are not going to fill the position and that the ARPA funding is gone. So we're looking to continue that program over time. Row 12, row 12 of this sheet is also worth noting. $503,000 of the local option tax revenue is earmarked for specific debt issuances. That's the final sidewalk bond, the pool bond, and most of the capital project restructuring bond we issued last year. All other revenue sources are predicted to remain stable. I would note for you in row 18, insurance reimbursement and miscellaneous. This is rather high in FY '24 and so far in FY '25. This is the result of the one-time sale of property and recognizing revenue over time as escrow conditions have been met. That is not a new trend, that is a one-time thing.
There's a discussion underway to reduce the state share of the local option tax.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
My guess is it probably won't have any legs anytime soon, but it's interesting that the discussion has happened.
Yeah, agreed.
Currently, the state takes 30%, right?
Of our 1%, yes, yeah. And their 6%.
No, they get all of those 6% plus 30% of our 1.
Right.
Which is then redistributed back to other communities through their payment of the taxes programs. So, but a lot of the issue is not just around the 30%, it's more around the administration fee.
Right.
Which is on top of that. I don't think we'll ever get out of the 30% because that was the deal that allowed LOTs to happen. But if they're running a surplus in the admin, then maybe they don't need it.
That was part of the discussion.
I share your skepticism there.
Moving to page nine, which is county and regional functions. This is the costing center in which we budget for and pay appropriations to nonprofit organizations. The Franklin County Tax for ambulance service in the city, and Northwest Access and other items of annual contribution to New C, to FCI DC, to Northwest Regional Planning, Solidways District. Each of these, as far as all of the nonprofit requests go, all requests that we received in FY '26, if they also existed in '25, have been funded at their requested level. And then the others, AM Care is contractual, and some of the others have an annual later as well. So no significant changes here.
We had a conversation during the Finance Committee regarding the allocation to AM Care, and Eric had some good insight on that, which is going to produce a, maybe a meeting or a conversation with AM Care in the coming months, before next budget season.
Is that increase due to salary, or is it just?
Yes and yes. New owners, the contract came in when the new owners came. Feel good to get some face time with them. We couldn't fight Mr. Levy.
Thank you, sir, sorry.
Oh, good, I appreciate that, hop in anytime. Page 10 is finance and administration. You'll see here, in the upper rows, rows one, three, five, and eight, the impacts of pulling back the Economic Development Director. I have to draw your attention to row 26. There is a spike in property and casualty insurance, yes. Rates have gone up, but I also double-divided last year's budget. So my apologies, I made a mistake there, and I have corrected it in the FY '26 budget. So it's not just on the carrier, that is also on me. Row 41, quickly moving to the next item, row 41 reflects the $50,000 transfer to redevelopment from the local option tax. So that's an inflow in the revenue section and outflow here. And as a result of not filling the economic development position, and all other operations remain stable in finance and administration.
26, were you saying that you were looking into next budget season getting other quotes?
That is correct, we were able to acquire one other quote this year, but because of some of, some issues at our dams, we were not able to change insurers, and we intend to continue to pursue that in, in coming years because I think the savings could be significant.
Sir, I'd also like to point out that the mayor's initiatives came well on.
Yes. That's what we all.
Sarah, I told you to cancel that. I told you to take that off the budget, what's this all doing here?
I'm going to stay out of this one. We, we do also fund our Green Up Day contribution out of this line, so if you thought that was missing from county and regional, it is, because we, we tuck it in here. Alright, moving on to page 11, which is the city clerk's office. There are no major, there are no operational changes in the clerk's office. We have reduced our anticipated dog license revenue because there are only 300-ish registered dogs in the city. We know how much per license we retain, so we're able to calculate that out based on our actual experience. Election expenditures are proposed to be down because we only have local election this year. All other adjustments in this costing center have been based on actual experience or upcoming contracts.
Can I go a little off topic?
Sure.
Reminded me, I was asking, Nicole and Dawn, but I was asking, have we stopped selling the Green Mountain senior passes through the clerks? Do you know, or? Your number A reminded me.
Yeah.
Passes sold?
It would, based on the revenue line, it would appear that we have, or they're now just free, and I can't remember which, but I'd be happy to ask Nicole.
Be careful. Someone had asked me that last week.
And Tim had asked me about digitizing maps, and I chatted with Nicole, Nicole's chatted with Chip recently about that project. I know everything since 2022 has been digitized, and they're in discussions about getting those books scanned in in the coming months and years.
Months and years?
I didn't want to speak for you, I don't know all the results of the conversation.
Within a year.
Awesome. Oh, Tim, Mr. Mayor, were you talking about, you were talking about the Green Mountain Transit or the Green Mountain Passport?
Green Mountain Passport.
The Passport, okay, yeah. Passport, sorry, I saw GM, and I thought that's what it was. I will get back to him. Alright. On to page 12, which is the Planning and Development Department. Also covers downtown zoning and assessing these days. Our increase to revenue reflects the fact that we anticipate receiving a grant to do some historic surveying. Down in the expenditure section, specifically row 21, we are budgeting the year two of, two of the contractual reappraisal costs. Tim, to your point, this will fall off next year, so this is the final year of budgeting for this project. As we move down in this costing center, row 28, dues and subscriptions, reflects an increased cost in the new Kama system that we changed to as part of the reappraisal to get easier access to data and better data in our systems. Other than the costs associated with that grant, in row 18, the grant is for $11,000. We expect to have a contract for $16,000 in professional services. The spread there will be our local match, which is in line with the grant match we've previously budgeted in row 36. So this project has a net zero impact and a budget change. There are no other, there are no other impactful changes here. We are returning to in-person training and travel. Those budgets reflect that post-COVID, but operationally, things remain the same here. Questions for planning and development budget, or for Chip? Is he right there? Surprise.
Were you with city marketing? City marketing part of this budget? You had some questions about that, did you?
I did, I shared the word now. I think we addressed most of them.
And then we got a, we got a memo from you today regarding what, is that part of this budget? No, it's not?
Nope.
Okay.
I mean, we could take it out of this. I don't anticipate a lot of expense for it, it's, it's a staff exercise, it's not it. But any expenses, you know, like we had, or Rorick Media do some of the design work, we would pay that out of here. But probably within the current FY.
And that'll be digital, you're not going to be printing anything.
But we are going to have to set up the ability for people to sign up online to get it. There'll be some costs, you know, nothing that should affect it.
Sir, before you continue, let's sort of break, see if anyone has any questions or comments. Where we are, I don't know. I don't want to get all the way through 28 stages and then that.
It's a great idea, thank you.
No questions?
Alright. Moving on to page 13. 13 is our debt service costing center. The first thing that may catch your eye is rows 16 through 25, which was debt-specific to the police and dispatch departments. Upon consolidating police services with the town, we've moved those debt items into those costing centers for full costing within the costing centers that are being shared with the town and reviewed by the JPB. In rows two, three, and, yeah, just two and three, we reflect transfers in from the water and wastewater funds for their contribution to two of our debt items, which is the City Hall renovation and the street sweeper. These are correlated with expenditure, rows nine for City Hall and 49 for the street sweeper. So these are expense, or these are debt service expenses that are shared amongst the funds. For auditing purposes and ease of tracking, we expense 100% of those here in the general fund, and then we pull in a transfer as a contribution from the other funds. There is, there is none of the new, there is, like I said earlier, there's one new debt issuance proposed as a lease financing for one marked car in police. That shows up in police. The only other, the only new item on this costing center is row 39. I'm proposing that we pay $20,000 toward the debt outstanding on the Weld and Theater. The debt is already outstanding, we're holding it in short-term debt as we determine, you know, what's the, things settle over there and what's the future of that building. And my suggestion is that we start chipping away at that while we make those decisions. So that is a new expense line, not a new debt issuance. Up for discussion. Are we bringing even, taking a loss? Well. Taking a profit, maybe? We'll be talking more about the Weld and Theater. On page. I'll be patient. Further, pages further down. Okay, thanks. I was just gonna.
Where will we find the Vector?
The Vector truck is in the enterprise funds. That's correct.
When does the new cut come in?
The Vector will probably be here in July or August.
And do we have any bidders on the old one?
We'll wait and see at that time what they give us for a trade agreement. Or if we circle back.
Okay, thank you. Sir, we move on to 14?
I'm ready, if you guys are. Alright. Page 14 is the summary budget for the police department and the dispatch department. These are summarized by major expenditure categories so you can see the trends more easily. These were accepted by the JPB on December 11th after a couple of meetings reviewing and going through the items. My. Joint Police Board, oh, define my, define your acronyms, yes. Shame, shame, shame. Yeah, so the required increase to the city tax levy is $359,000. We've already discussed that, that's 72% of the overall tax levy increase. This is primarily a personnel budget with the capital purchases being one vehicle and some tactical equipment that we added in there, an additional expense to support the street crimes unit, and one unmarked car as well. All of the debt payments, all the debt associated with police and dispatch are reflected in here as.
Do you want to use the time to give a quick overview of why the increase in terms of recruitment and competition with other departments?
Sure.
To share that. I think that's a message we need to start getting out there.
Yep. So, let me do that after we get to the police budget. You want to do that?
Oh, yeah. I was done though.
Totally done?
Yeah. Sorry, I can, I can keep going if you want some time.
Because, Tim, you know that's Trudy chatted me on the joint police, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'm just saying, why the budget increase and the budget?
Why was it such an increase?
The most rapidly exponential, the most rapidly increasing expense in city government, I think you could call it exponential, is police officer salaries. And we have to remain competitive with other communities who are eagerly trying to steal our officers by offering them more money and better benefits. And so, you recall when we did the goals and objectives review, one of our main objectives in public safety was to not just retain, but expand our police officers. And we, we've hit that mark. But we were a little light on salaries. As we got to the end of this fiscal year, we had a three-year union contract coming to an end, and that had suppressed wages a little bit. That's why we were able to have the de minimis increase last year. And then this year, the lid came off when we were forced to look at it and see what we're paying relative to other communities who are within an easy commuting distance, like Milton, like South Burlington, like Assets.
What were their increases?
Like Swan. And the percent increase can be a little bit misleading because it depends on where you were measuring from. the percent increase can be a little bit misleading because it depends on where you were measuring from. But just to give you a sense of the order of magnitude, Milton went up 30%, three zero.
Something coming out of the account.
Uh, for like, you know, base officer wages, right? So, um, we were paying our officers in the, in the the high 20, eight, high, high twenties per hour. And we needed to get up into the low 31s in order to be competitive. Not just with South Burlington and Essex, but Swanton Village. So, that sugared off for us as an 8% increase to their base. And that, that was the biggest driver in wages. There was a similar conversation occurring on the Dispatch side. We're the busiest dispatch center, municipal dispatch center in the state because we dispatch for all of Franklin County, a little bit of Grand Isle. And we're also what's called a public safety answering point. When you call 911, it comes in to our dispatch center. So, we were a little light there as well, about the same amount, and we need to do the same on the Dispatch side. That's the nut of it.
Back to you.
Back to me. I just wanna add. I do wanna add one quick thing, just in that range of compare, comparative starting salaries, the Burlington is up at 38, and we were down at 28. And then Milton's off-cycle increase that wasn't negotiated put them into the mid-30s. And so even with our increase, we're still middle of the pack.
What about the top, though? Like, does the top vary? Because like, I know starting is where we want to get them out of the academy, but does the top, are we still in the middle of the pack for the top of the scale for an officer who's been with us for ten years? We're still in the middle?
Yeah, you know, the, we, as I said at the bargaining table, places like Burlington that are having a really hard time recruiting have to pay the most. And so, part of what we're offering is, we've been pretty supportive of our Police Department. This is a stable Police Department that treats its other, its officers well and doesn't get in a fight with the City Council about defunding the police, et cetera. So, there's some intangibles there that mean a lot to officers. Tell them.
I have just one more question. Are, because we're, we're like a city center, right? Like, we're like Burlington and Rutland. When you're a city center, you have a lot of services for people. We have shelters, we have drug treatment facilities, we have, you know, a soup kitchen. Like, we have all of the services, we have more people, therefore we need more police, right? I'm assuming in every city center across the state of Vermont, they're seeing a huge increase in their police budgets because all of those services and people require more police presence. There, is there any, like, support from the state for ourselves? Like, will, will city center Burlington, is that even a thing?
It's not a thing. In fact, the state of Vermont is acting, you see it in front of us. How many times do, you know, almost a month, certainly not a quarter goes by, that there isn't a new service seeking to open up in the city. And the state of Vermont's policy is to fund all of that in our core central cities, which is probably where it ought to be.
That lack of accountability, lack of consequences for bad behavior
Yeah.
requires us to have a police budget that's 72% of our increase. Like, we need it, and this is why.
Where we distinguish ourselves, I'm sorry for jumping in, Trudy, but
I'm off my.
All the things that the council's been doing over the last year, the Street Crimes Unit is already paying big dividends for us, you know? And so to stand up that unit within a year in this recruiting environment, that's huge. So, that's gonna help bend the needle. I think that, you know, you've heard me say it a million times, the Public Misuse Ordinance is gonna bend the needle. But nobody's gonna come to our rescue, we need to do it ourselves.
What we need is some of these communities around us, not the town, because the town is far bigger than ours, to chip in to what we have to go through to keep these, them safe from the people that are here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the exception to your company, Milton isn't in that situation. It's a larger community, but they don't have a, they don't have a city center. They don't have, they don't have a downtown park. I mean, there, there's some ways exempt from stuff that we see from.
Right. I just think it's a huge systems issue, and it starts in Montpelier. And hopefully, with the changes that happen in Montpelier, hopefully we'll start to see more, Marie's favorite word, accountability, which will deter people from wanting to commit crimes, will, anyway. That's in a Public Safety Committee meeting.
A way to reduce the costs further is to achieve additional economies of scale. We're not there yet from a staffing perspective, but someday we might be. The one thing they want, do you know how many communities would love to be able to hire our Police Department?
There was another thing Trudy said, you know, about recruitment. You know, our wages may be a little bit in the middle of the road. I think you explained that our benefit package is pretty far beyond a lot of other departments, and that's a pretty big recruiting goal.
Yeah.
And that's a driver of the budget as well. We, we give a very good benefit package to our.
And insurance costs. I mean, and those benefits, like, across the board for people. Like, we're seeing double-digit increases in insurance costs.
We did experience 12% premium increases in all of our health insurance. Also, one of the things that we're hopeful in going, continuing to go out to bid for our other insurances, property and casualty insurance, the Police Department, you know, one of the other quotes we got this year, could, we could realize six figures in savings here if we were able to, to, to insert some competition into this realm. Our Police Liability Premium itself increased by 46, up by 46%, maybe went to $46,000 from 11. It increased a lot, that makes sense. So it must have been 46% just last year to this year. And those are large drivers, and when you just have the one option, your, your hands are tied. So, we're hopeful about some potential savings there in the future, or at least pursuing that avenue as potential savings. We also had the sunsetting of two domestic violence grants, so our revenues dropped and the police, our non-tax revenues dropped in the Police Department going into FY '26. The Police Department was able to secure a cops hiring grant for the next three years, which will help offset some of the costs to new entry-level officers. And so we were able to recoup some of our grant revenue here, but we have a net reduction of $44,000 in, in non-tax revenues in the Police Department. So that did not help the burden on the tax levy.
Is that a federal grant?
All, yes, both domestic violence were federal, and then the cops hiring is also federal. That all said, recall, back on page, page bar chart, page four, we are still below FY '22 levels when it comes to reliance on the city tax rate. Certainly, that line is still, is heading up. I don't think we'll be able to say that next year. But, you know, this is, we have realized some significant savings by working with the town.
Okay, page 15?
Page 15 is little, sorry about that. This is Animal Control. There are no significant changes here. This is reflective of us contracting with an individual to do animal control in the city. The town does there separately. We're working to consolidate this in with overall police in the coming years. So, no changes there.
Wasn't there a quick conversation that Bracy just wanted?
Bracy's doing a lot of it, yeah.
Moving on to page 16, the Fire Department. The Fire Department is another department that has a reduction in personnel expenditures because we're not filling vacancies, so a full-time vacancy that occurred in FY '25 will not be filled to help reduce costs. We have reallocated existing staff so that we don't have any drop-off in the rental house, in the rental inspection program. I would draw your attention to Row 2 on this page, the Public Building Inspection. So as I'm saying, the reduced staff won't have a negative impact. You see that the revenue is going down. That is because the quadrant under inspection has fewer units. So, that decrease is not directly associated with less staff. That is a calculation of number of units under inspection for the year. There are no operational changes in Fire. We will use, we'll continue our capital plan of replacing some of the SCBAs using capital funding as needed. Let's see. We continue to replace three sets of firefighting gear every year. We have annual testing costs for our hose, our pumps, and our ladders. We do, are looking to replace one of the department's computers. Yeah, and there are no other, there are no other operational changes in Fire. Any questions on that department?
The PHSO violations, is that when you find someone for a property that's not up to snuff? They send you a check, or is it when they sell the building, they have to pay the fines? How does that work?
Either. We prefer the former. No.
Okay.
But it racks up pretty heavy interest.
Okay, I see.
And it's a real stinky fish at closing.
Okay.
Any other questions about Fire before we move on? Okay. Pages 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, all the way through 25 are Recreation. Recreation covers Recreation Administration programs, operations at Hardak, operations at the Barlow Street School, the pool, and the Weldon Theater. On page 18 is a summary, so you can see at a high level what's happening in Recreation. And we will go department by department to get into that. My notes aren't, are kind of overall, 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 all over the place, though. So, on page 19, we have seen an increase in the utilization of programming as a whole, specifically the afternoon program, which is reflected in Row 1, miscellaneous program revenues. We also have an increased utilization in day camps. You can see that through, from 2020 through 2024, this is Row 6. Our average has hovered around $180,000. We have already surpassed our current year budget. Our current year budget is $215,000, and we've hit $230,000. I have pushed the revenue budget up slightly for this line. One year does not make a trend. So I was hesitant to do, to do much increasing in the revenues in Recreation, but this one seemed like a good call, given our discussion with Kelly. Many of the other revenues have remained the same or have been trimmed back. Disc Golf, for example, Row 12, this is a free program. We had attempted to do some paid tournaments, but we were not getting any participants because they could just come the next day and play for free. Historically, Recreation is an area where we have been more aggressive in our revenue budget. And I've put a request, or I have put together this budget with input from, from Kelly and from Dom and from the Finance Committee. I've been pretty conservative in the revenue budgets for Recreation. When we get too aggressive on the revenue side, if we don't, we fall short there. That automatically creates a deficit that has to be built up other places. And so, maybe it's my professionally, like, conservative approach to budgeting, but I have pulled these back some, which is evident in the bottom line on page 18, being an increase in the net reliance on taxes. So, up for discussion. But I would, I hate to get too far out of our, ahead of myself on the revenue side. In expenditures and general Recreation, we have no operational changes. You'll notice that in Row 35, we have had an increase to the cost of workers' comp in Recreation. Workers' Compensation Insurance and Police Dispatch and Recreation took a hit on the rate side this year. On page, so that's that one, here, Contract. Row 42, which is at the bottom of 19, telephone costs. We are currently reviewing all of our telephone costs organization-wide, and we're hopeful to pull some of these, to bend the curve on some of these numbers over time. This is proving to be a very tedious and slow-going process, but we're making some, some early progress. On page 20, in Recreation, we have some tech, tech supply, or some tech items that need to be replaced in the coming year in Row 47. One computer and three monitors for the staff as a whole. And other than that, we're projecting stability in all of the programs. We have no capital expenditures proposed in Recreation this year. Let's keep on keeping on to page 21, which is Hardak. Hardak has a overall reduction in budgeted revenue. This is primarily a result of Row 7 Lodge Rentals, where we've reduced the hours that people can rent out the Greg Brown Lodge so that it's open to the public more often. On the expenditure side, this will be our, we have hired the Hardak Maintenance Position, which was first in the budget in FY '25. And this FY '26 budget will be the second year with that position. We've consolidated some accounts, but overall, our operations are stable at Hardak. We just have that reduction in anticipated revenue with rentals.
Is the, are we, have we been fully paid back for the lodge, the overspending on the lodge from that?
We trans, uh, we turned what was due to us, which was over, which was about $300,000, into part of the Capital Projects note this past year. And the 5% Hardak surcharge has been used last year, current year, and in future years to pay the debt service on that until it's paid back.
It's getting close to.
No, it just started. So like seven more years. I think we did a 10-year note on that. Uh, but the revenue source comes into our books, and I allocate it based on what's due for that note. So, it is a secure funding source. On page 22, we have operations at Barlow. Barlow Street School is pretty simple. We have a tenant there, and we have costs associated with owning and maintaining the building. Which takes us right into the pool on page 23. I think the, the pool is the place where revenue projections may be the most conservative. I have pulled them, pulled them down. We have a spike in 2023 when the new pool was open, although things have been pretty stable around the 500,000 mark. I projected 26 revenues based on what we had received to date in '25. These are on the conservative side. But I would argue we are still determining our utilization trends at the new pool.
Are town contributions collected annually? Is that why you don't have to.
Uh, the town is billed quarterly, and all of that sits in Rec Administration until we go back and allocate it based on actuals. Usually we do it, I try to, wow. I would love to say I do it quarterly, but I definitely do it at least once a year.
So that allows them to get the city rate for people to use the pool?
That is correct.
Do they offer that same benefit to Fairfield, Georgia, Swanton, and other local communities?
There are other, some, there are some other communities that take advantage of that arrangement, and then the municipality pays the difference.
And that town now is?
There are a lot of numbers here, Tim. I mean, I, I don't think I have that one handy, although let me see if those are called out.
Is it up above General Rec?
Um, I don't, I can look, I can find out for you. It's not as significant as the Town of St. Albans.
But there are others.
But there are others.
No, he's looking for the town.
I was wondering about the town.
The town's a big grant.
Yeah, $20,000 is the budget, budgeted amount for the town to the pool in the current year. In 2024, it was, it was $17,000, in 2023 it was $7,000, but they didn't start until halfway through the year. And then there's also.
Well-played, right?
Yeah, beautifully played.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's a joke, can I?
I know. I know, I know.
They're paying $20,000. They were supposed to be on the hook for $500,000, not supposed to.
And their kid, and their people still do the same benefit?
Same benefit as the city.
It's a story as old as the two communities.
You're right, though, it doesn't, yeah.
Well, that's, that's the best deal of all? I think, I think it needs to be revisited myself.
Okay.
Then you'd have to revisit it with other towns too, right?
I, I think that's, I think it's different. It's the same but different. I mean, the town.
Had a chance.
Had a chance. They turned the mills up out of it, they voted it down. We had bring it back to our voters and go for the whole thing. And now they're on equal, on par with our residents for $20,000. So I just think it should be revisited.
And that's on the pool side. Back on Recreation Administration and Programs, page nineteen, row fourteen, the town also contributes about $60,000 a year to pay the difference for town residents to participate in non-pool city recreation programs.
Still, is it still part of it? They've learned that, they've tried doing it all. Can we go back to day camp?
Yep.
We hear about complaints on a day camp.
Next year, we're gonna develop a plan to have a residential preference.
Cause the spots one is quick as Taylor Swift spots her kids. And the system, system is gonna handle it from what I see.
I agree with the first part.
But can, is that an opportunity for us? Can we make that, can we make the enrollment larger by hiring more staff, renting a tent? Is it, is it an opportunity to bring on another camp leader and then add more spots?
Not at that facility, but the rec director is looking into a satellite facility.
I'm also curious, we're talking about rec, to your point. When we, it's a St. Albans city rec, correct? We fund most of it?
No.
Fifty-fifty?
No. Well, what do you mean by rec?
Rec, uh, day camp, like any, any.
Day camp or?
Any program. I'm just curious how, what percentage of city kids are doing the programs that rec offers?
Generally, it's about sixty, forty, town, city.
Town is sixty, city's forty. So I have a problem with that. Because we have kids that probably have less opportunity, the parents that probably aren't going to be able to be on the phone to get those Taylor Swift tickets, you know?
Yeah, but we're, we're combining too many things here. Next year, we will give city residents first crack at the day camp.
Does that, does that influence our contribution from supervisory?
We can sort that out. Given the city's investment, we will make sure that the city kids get first crack at it. That's a pretty common practice statewide. It's a great place to go to day camp, you know? So that's what's happening. We've increased the costs every single year there. And we've pushed a lot of that to non-residents. So.
You're making money off of the 60% of non-residents.
Yeah, yeah, we follow the UVM model.
Yeah.
So, and we can adjust it more and the pool is a different kettle of fish. What happened this year was, it was just demand. It was really the, the Taylor Swift phenomena that just, it took off in a way that nobody anticipated.
So valid, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it hadn't done that previous years, there was, so.
Town contribution based on the number of kids using or keeping using the pool? Or is that just a fixed number?
It's an actual, so every single, there's a report of where do people live and then that gets billed back to the town select board and they pay the difference.
So we're showing rec losing $250,000 a year?
I'm, the budget that I have in front of you is a $225,000 reliance on the city.
And we said many years ago that we wanted to make sure that we had valid expenses, which I couldn't have. And you have recommended that we eye those expenses in light of what's gone on for income last year in making the projected revenue for this year. So you could have made that more.
Could have.
But you're being conservative.
I'm trying to.
All right, so that's, I just want to make sure everyone understands that when they see a quarter million dollars. One is A, I remember the words of Dick Peters, who said, sitting over there with Marie over in this area, the other room, whoever said rec had to make any money, because I was on the bandwagon to get rec out of here if it wasn't making money. And I was.
No, definitely I remember.
Okay.
Were you the rec director then?
No.
But, you know, people have said, look, you know, why? And maybe this discussion that you guys have brought up is something we need to take a look at too. And that will, that will encourage the same type of conservatism without losing anything to our kids in, in the long run. And what makes me say this is that the last budget committee hearing we had, Chad made a statement that I thought about, I was in Florida and I was doing it by Zoom. After I got done, and I just thought about it for a while and he, in lieu of this budget, he said, look, we don't want to be the police state. We still want money for rec and those other things, even though we're not doing it this year because the demand is so high for our public services. And I just think we should keep that in mind. And it's ironic, I think, that you brought that up because that is, that is a good deal for a lot of people, not us. You know? We're the ones taking the hit here.
Yeah, and to your point, the loss doesn't bother me, I mean, within reason. You know, I go back to Bill Chaukey. Bill Chaukey said, I'd rather pay him $200,000 and have kids playing sports or playing in the gym as opposed to breaking windows out in the street. So there's, there's some social benefit to it for paying that amount for sure. And, but what is that, what is that?
And also, back to our bar chart on page four, this is the recreation column. You know, so this program is significantly self-supported. So 1.7, 1.78 million in cost, $250,000 on the city taxpayer. For your consideration and discussion.
Okay. And any other comments, questions?
All right. The pool, we're just about done on the pool. One of the larger cost increases of the pool is row thirty-eight on page twenty-four. We are discovering what it costs to heat the pool and that needs to go up. It is pushing $80,000 a year to, to heat the facility.
And is it at eighty-two degrees?
I, it's warm enough to swim when it's cold out, that's all I know.
Maybe, maybe it can go eighty.
That's what I do at home, put on a sweatshirt.
Cause my kid's doing lessons for her first time and she turned blue, so it's not all that warm. So it felt pretty cold getting in the water back there.
But there was a, there was an air issue, right?
Yeah.
There was one of those.
There was, yeah, it's bad sex.
Yeah.
Was that there when you were there, the air issue?
Yeah. Yeah. It was cold.
Onto page twenty-five, the Weldon Theater. So the Weldon Theater, we started running during fiscal '23, about halfway through the year. The theater comes close, but so far has not broken even. In FY25, we invested in a full-time theater manager and that position has made a big difference. And so our actual sales as of the beginning of December in FY25 are, are, if you look at row two and three, ticket sales are at two-thirds what we were expecting for the year. Concessions are at three-quarters. And so I, I guess I used all my conservatism on general rec because on the Weldon, I took those numbers and I said, let's assume we have, we have, we continue this trend. We have the new manager in place now. This is a much different theater than in the first year and a half where, that we had it and we were trying to figure out, what does this door go to? Where is that smell coming from? And a whole host of other issues. So we're very happy to have Tim on board as the theater manager. And we are taking what he's done so far as a launching, a launching place into 2026. You may recall last year when we were talking about the budget in 2025. So the Weldon Theater is next door, it is in the building on the first floor and then there are residential rentals in the upper floors. And so last year, we decided to take any excess of rental income over costs to manage those rentals and offset the operating costs of theaters. So that is in FY25 budget, that's reflected in rows four and twenty-five. We have opted to pull that back out in '26 and keep those funds in redevelopment, which is also incurring costs to maintain and repair that building because those are also coming in left, right and center. So one of the big changes here from '25 to '26 is pulling those back out. Trudy, to your question, so the theater has not, has had a deficit '23, '24. We budgeted a deficit in '25. So far though, as of the beginning of December in 2025, we are breaking even. It has turned a $7,800 surplus with, with Tim at the helm and some great movies. I went a few weeks ago with my, with my son and some friends and we were waiting in line by the mailbox outside and it was great to see.
Is there two full-time employees or just one?
There are two full-time employees. So we have the full-time manager and then we converted one of our most frequent part-timer, who was also cleaning the building, into a full-time. We got rid of the cleaning contract after some issues with them. And we have a great, you know, dedicated second, second-in-command over there.
And this is one of those things that if you are not making money, it's still so important to have. It is a community, I feel, like it's, it's something to go and do if you want.
One of the questions I've had a couple of glasses, they're gonna expand and go back to some of my activities that we saw there because there's some, there's stuff that we have, money is there that's closed.
Tuesday's used to be discount day.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, oh, we have two full-time, maybe that could be an option to get a store.
Especially if it's not our money.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind having Tim come in and talk to us.
Yeah.
At some point, not just say what's go, what's up and.
Maybe Kelly too.
Yeah, here's what I've got, here's what I have, here's what my vision is, yeah.
And also I had a good relationship with the film club in Franklin County, so the green and movies there had a couple of days on, but they packed a theater for a fantastic lot to the other day and that was pretty busy, I was surprised with the turnout.
That's great.
Yeah, you guys like him, we should get him in.
All right, now the one we've all been waiting for is Public Works.
All right. There are no operational changes in Public Works. Overall, overall revenue is decreasing because we had one-time debt issuances in 2025 related to capital. On the capital flip side, that is also going down. So we're looking at row eight, it's a decrease in debt proceeds in 2026. We did replace one set of banners in the current year. I think we're looking to replace another set. I think we did like Fall and Nexus Winter, that's included in the budget. Over on page twenty-seven, on row fifty-four, which is repair and maintenance vehicles, we did increase this as a result of deferring the replacement of the 2012 F-550 to the FY27 budget. So we pulled the debt issuance to replace that in the first year of debt payments and we put some additional funds in repair and maintenance to deal with things that might be breaking on that vehicle in the coming year. We are looking at also a level price per ton on salt and sand, which we are appreciative of. That's row sixty-six. Row seventy starts the expenditures for parks. All operations are stable there. And row eighty-eight starts our capital for Public Works. Again, we have a level fund of $300,000 toward the paving program and a request to purchase a roller for patch paving instead of renting one. Are there any, that was all I have on my notes as well, questions on Public Works and parks?
Marty, where do you think you are on the street removals?
We're probably ninety percent done.
That truck's not falling apart, right Marty?
No, it's just the rotation, it's just near the dynamis now.
Yeah, 2012, every, what, ten years, twenty years, maybe fourteen years, something like that, yeah.
Those one tons take a beating. They're the ones that are on all the residential streets in the wintertime plowing and stuff, so. Salt hard on.
Onto parking, parking is on page twenty-eight. The very first thing I'd like to draw your attention to on parking is the bottom line, row fifty. The FY25 budget projected that parking would lose $108,000. And as a result of changes we've made to both staffing and systems, the FY26 proposal is a loss of $38,000. These are both negative numbers, but that is a significant increase year over year. In fact, FY25, as of the middle of December, is only at a $26,000 negative, so just about 50% of the way through the year, but only 25% of the way through the anticipated deficit. So this is a promising trend, I'm pleased to be able to share it with you. We do have a reduction in staff, we previously had two individuals here. This is part of the reallocation, the shuffling of positions to fill some other vacancies. We have reflected in revenues and expenditures for 2026, the new programs. Park Mobile is no cost to the city. And then the parking ticket and the parking permit programs, their annual subscription fees are reflected in row thirty-five. And there is an increase there from the subscription we were previously paying for the T-VA system. Bless you. We're going down on IT services and supplies because we have no more servers or computers out there in the garage. That's a decrease. And let's see, we have a slight increase in supplies to reflect the increased cost of the special ticket paper, which, I don't know if you've gotten a ticket yet, but you can't rip it, like it's very, it's very heavy duty, it's very cool. I've got one in my office, if you ever want to try, just rip it. A sample, it was, yeah, a sample, not. A test ticket. Pass my bed.
I did see Jared doing two tickets on Southern Street today. Working on the South Side of the street. Underneath the sign, there's no parking on Southern Street.
But, but it has the, the markings are still on the road. And so a lot of people will look at the markings and not see the signs. I've got a lot of clients over there and I'll say, look, you guys can't park over there and they, they point down at the road and I point up at the sign. You know, I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of conflicting, but I think they're only getting warnings. I don't, I don't know if anyone's got.
I was hoping that was.
Yeah, I don't think they're getting, I don't think they're getting genuine dollar tickets yet. I think they're, they're still at the warning level, hopefully, I don't know that for sure. But we should get rid of the, we should get rid of the white markings on the, on the pavement.
Marty, did we get rid of the yellow lines on High Street or was that the scam?
Well, the state came in, edged them out.
It looks terrible, but it's not there.
They had to bring their etcher back in to blast them out after we might have definitely weren't supposed to.
Who would say a service was an apple ticket so far?
Yeah, you, what, yeah, 580 was.
Yeah, I think we're, we're over 600 now.
600 tickets? It's a lot of tickets, but remember, it's our folks paying them, you know?
True, true. It also includes plenty of warnings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope it's non-residents that are, that are paying them. But they're learning, it's a learning experience.
It is.
Yep. Oh, and for the public, get Park Mobile. Get Park Mobile on your phone, it's easy, do it, get Park Mobile.
Even send your reminders if you get close to the end of your time.
Yep. Yep.
Parking was on your goals and objectives list. Check that off. All right. The final page in your packet is the Restorative Justice Center. The Restorative Justice Center is just about 100% grant-funded. We do make a contribution through the Police Department and other communities and Franklin and Grand Isle counties also contribute through municipal appropriations. But the vast majority of these programs, and in fact, everything reflected in the budget, one. $1,151,000 is a variety of state and federal grants. So this is included for visibility, so that you see what's happening over there. But this is, is really controlled by the grantors. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take questions.
What do we contribute to restorative justice?
$15,000 and that's split evenly between the city and town.
And then.
And then administrative support.
Other, other surrounding communities also. Because I see people on my list from different places other than the city and town.
Yes.
So they contribute as well.
Pittance.
Yeah.
A pittance, but they contribute.
Going back to the market point, remember I brought up, I brought up the theater's new advertising opportunities for us to be able to.
Yeah.
So that gives us, well, as courses like didn't haul out to help offset our revenues.
If we look at the, what we've discussed in the joint police board meetings, to me, in my mind, everyone might be against this. I, I think we're going to see this again, this type of increase again. There, there's a lot of things that, that department needs. You know what I mean? That they're, they're working with things that aren't, you know.
Tactical gear.
Yeah, their tactical gears is lacking a little bit.
Guns.
But, I mean, I think they're gonna, they're gonna need help again this year.
So just, it's hadn't come to the council yet, but I should get the number for you, but there was a discussion at the JPB about the need for tactical gear. City staff felt like we hadn't used tactical gear yet. It was an emerging expense. Police officers felt like it was a life safety issue that they needed it tomorrow. And the townest and all been stepped up and bought tactical gear using their leftover ARPA money. We should add that to the pool contribution.
We use that gear up at the pool.
Yeah. We'll do aquatic tactical gear.
Okay, let's move along. Has council had any more discussion, comments on the budget?
I did prepare a present that's understandable and clearly defined why we have to do this.
Thank you.
Audience, any questions or comments? So we're not going to do a budget to necessarily approve the proposal with more support of, right?
We have to have a couple of meetings, haven't we? We can't do it tight, can we?
I'm just looking at what was.
We didn't warn it.
Motion reflecting council's sentiments.
Yeah, so you don't really approve the budget. You approve the warning. And so if you feel like we're there, you can pass a motion to that effect, or you can just indicate that in your comments and we'll prepare the warning that would implement this. That's the action. So the warning would implement CHIPS, LUNA, and coming up, and this.
We do a special meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're going to 9, 9%.
9.5.
Luckily, the school isn't looking at double digits this year for the first time in a while. So they're looking at like a 4, maybe even a 2% on top of.
Feeling a little heat, huh?
So we'll wait for that.
Yeah, if you think we're good, we'll prepare a warning that reflects this budget.
Across the board.
I mean, there's not much else to come, right? Like it's, it's driven by the police force and we have 300 people tell us we need more public safety. So we're.
If people are holding to it, I would propose we cut council and their wages.
We can get wages.
Say yes to that, at least. Okay, so let's do that. We'll go forward to that. Right, Sarah, thank you for that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Appreciate you.
And all the department heads.
Yes, I'll pass that on.
You're gonna go home, right?
My kids alone, so I am gonna go home, but.
Nice job, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Chip to discuss the CSO.
Thank you. We are proposing a bond item for the most significant project toward mitigating our combined sewer overflow that we've ever pursued. And it's been a long time coming for a liability that has been hanging over the wastewater system for a long time as well. It's probably right up, well, it's certainly older than the Fonda problem that we've had. And it might be right up there with the federal street connector project that's been contemplated since the 70s. But you might, probably all know that like many historic communities, we, part of our sewer system is combined with stormwater. So it takes in stormwater as well as all the underground sewage from all the homes and businesses on certain, on certain sections of the city. Most of the city is separated, but the parts of the city that are combined are significant enough that during large storm events or other melts or precipitation events, the system will actually back up before the water can even get to the wastewater treatment plant. And it will back up at the lowest point in the system, like Marty mentioned, which is the intersection of South Elm and Lower Weldon. And right now, the way it's designed, we monitor those flow, those overflows and they go into Stevens Brook. But if it's bad enough, it'll flood that entire intersection and we have to close the thing down. It's mixed sewage and stormwater, but it's, you know, it's technically considered a pollutant. Gets into Stevens Brook, it gets into Sidelman's Bay. And we're under a state order to solve, well, to address this problem, hopefully solve the problem someday. Regardless of the order, the whole community is expected that the city and the wastewater system are going to figure this problem out at some point. We pursued various different options. We've been doing a lot of planning and design work with Aldrich and Elliot. You have a couple of options. One is you can start separating large portions of the system so that the stormwater goes to stormwater, the sewer stays sewer, and you don't get an overflow anymore. And we did actually one separation project last year. It, it was Steben Street. And, you know, it was a big deal. It was a good checkbox. It's something that we promised the state we'd do, but it only separates a miniscule, minuscule amount of what's causing the overflows. We were exploring a larger separation project, and this would be a big one, that would create a connection between Federal Street and Pearl Street to make a major separation come to fruition, something we'd been working on with the streetscape projects. We just ran into issues with time, involved parties, the railroad, contamination, not having access to land. And the project was starting to reveal itself to be very complicated and very costly. So then there's always the other option. You can just store the overflow during an event. And then after the event is over, you can slowly pump whatever's being stored into the wastewater system at a rate that the system can take. This means you don't have to rip up a bunch of streets. You don't have to retrofit all the underground utilities. You just have to find a place to do that storage and figure out how much you want to store. We have talked about a project over the past couple of years with the, we've hinted at it with the city council, that because of its proximity to the actual overflow, the open land at Houghton Park is actually a pretty good spot to do the storage. And we have the option of doing the storage underground so that it's the park on top of our storage facility. And that, you can see that in the 11 by 17 that's in your packet. It's designed for half a million gallons. But if you look at the figure on the second page of the memo, the vast majority of overflow events over the past six years, seven years have been half a million gallons or under. So if we can add half a million gallons of storage to the system, we would eliminate the vast majority of times that we get an overflow. It gets reported to the state. Sometimes it gets some press. And sort of a failure of our system makes us look bad. We would eliminate the vast majority of those overflows. Maybe someday we have to solve all of the overflows. Maybe someday climate change is going to make it so that, you know, we're starting to see more, even though we're storing, storing half a million gallons. Maybe, maybe not. But right now, we know that with this project, which has been designed and is feasible and has some grant money behind it, we could do that 500,000 gallons of storage and eliminate. We might have a year with no overflow. I mean, if we build this thing and it's a particularly dry year and, and the thaw, and the winter thaw proceeds into, to a certain pace. The reason why we need to bond is because the cost of the project is more than the grant money we have. We have ARPA money from the state at a, we spent some on Steben Street and then we have 2.8 million left. We're looking at a project that's conservatively estimated at 6.8 million. Hopefully it'll come in under that, but with what we know now at this time, we're going to go with that number. It would be a project that we would start the latter half of 25 and would be finished in 2026 before the grant funding runs out. We would pursue another $1 million in Vermont DEC SRF grants. And then we would, the balance of that would have to be, I guess it's about 3 million in SRF loans, some of which might also still be forgivable, but you don't really know that until you see what's in the pool. And because of the SRF rules that they like to see all of their grants, all of their subsidy, all of their loan named in a bond, it would mean that the language in a bond would have to be $4,130.
So it's 500,000 gallons. What's the cost go up for like more storage? I mean, we're already kind of putting, we're already putting the system in place. Is it? Is it, is it beneficial to just plan for climate change and do a system that might hold future problems? Cost-wise and just get it done on one shot?
You know, I gotta say, we didn't really ask that question specifically. One of the things we did, we looked at that section of Houghton Park that's not the football field and found that the 500,000 fit right in that space. So we were kind of taking into account the, the, this, this, there will be some manholes. There might be some vents. There's not, there's going to be some indication that there's something underground, but overall, overall, it will just be a big lung. However, if that starts to extend into the football field is being used, it would be, it would be disruptive. So we kind of felt that we were constrained to use this space right along Lower Weldon. And that's one of the reasons why we went with the 500,000. Plus, I think when you, when you consider the cost, I mean, I, I think getting 500,000 now for this cost and, and not having it be more expensive would, would probably be the way to go.
Is the system like, sorry, I'm going to make your office, but is it easy to add more storage? Is it difficult to add more storage?
It's actually, there is potential we could add more storage. There, we're also looking at potential other sites in the city that could also be storage.
Is, would this be the only bond that we would be putting?
Yes.
To voters?
Yeah.
So Chip, when it, when are all the cylinders? What's the?
It's all three tanks that are all winter tanks.
So one will fill and move down.
Right. The first row will fill and then it'll go down. If it fills them all, we'll have to, we'll release valves that'll pump it all out. And then afterwards, we'll go in and clean out each channel.
So you will have the access to cleaning with, with the back door.
Right. Well, we'll have a, at the end, there's going to be a trash pump there that will take all the solids and contain 90% of the solids there. It just allow the liquid in. So we'll go in and back that out. I don't know if the planes show where we'll back up the back truck to that on the west side. Southwest corner.
Yeah, those hatched, those hatched rectangles are where, are reinforced turf where we can back up the backer truck.
Could the Climate and Energy Committee explore any additional grant opportunities to help cover the cost? I see the SRF and the state's ARPA funds will help, but are there other? Does he consider, consider environmental?
Maybe. I mean, there's potential, but we are now, at this point, we're kind of running out of time. We're up against the late 2026 expiration of the ARPA funds. If we could find more funding to throw at it, we would.
Trudy, don't pitch that until we appoint the three new members.
I take it back.
A and E has been good too about seeking grants and programs.
All right, Chip, what do you need from us? Anything?
It's an introduction of the item. I think we want your general agreement that you would consider putting this forward as a bond item on the meeting warning this year, and then we would work up the bond warning language.
Chad, it's only, this is what you're talking, it's just wastewater from storms, stuff like that?
Yeah, it's because the storm with all the stormwater gets added into the combined system with the sewage and it overloads it. It actually, it never even makes it to the plant. The, the line that goes all the way down to the plant can't actually fit all the water in it. So the water backs up at South Elm and Lower Weldon.
I think the only thing I'd like to keep in mind is, you know, I don't think the state's going to get easier on us with runoff and wastewater and, and water. And I know it's a lot of money, but can we spend a nickel now where it's going to cost us a dollar later? Because I think restrictions are just going to get tougher and tougher.
Well, we don't know for sure that the state's ultimately going to really force every community with an overflow to eliminate them 100%. That's, that's a tall order. I think this is the right move for right now. And if, you know, given time, if we are told we have to eliminate all of them, we could pursue other options that might, we might find another way that's more cost-effective even than this. You know, maybe there are separation projects here and there, and we'd have to deal with it, with the specifics at the time. But like, like I said, there's another site we're looking at for a future project.
Chip, we'll, we'll visit with Wayne just to, you know, your points well taken, Chad, like, are we being stupid here, right? And should we, is there an opportunity to get a little bit more now while we can? You know, we'll report back, but, you know, the, if there was low hanging fruit, the engineers probably would have grabbed it. You know, the sensitivity to the Steelers is not something that would have weighed on them as much as it would of us, right? So, but we'll ask the question again.
Cool. Thanks. I think the potential too is you could expand these. If you look at the way this is designed, you could expand more channels further north if we wanted to go that route. So it's not reinventing the wheel. It's just expanding what we already have there.
You, you mentioned another project. Is that a CBPS project? Is that anything that's still on the table or?
Oh, that's a stormwater treatment project. That's going to be treating stormwater from the separated system. It's not a CSO.
That's very much on the table.
Yeah, that's also going to be happening.
But if they're treating stormwater, it could reduce that on the combined stormwater source. And you're taking that out of the system, I guess.
That'll be, that's going to be treating stormwater in a separated system, not in a combined system. So it's not stormwater that's, that's. So it's not stormwater that's, that's contributing to our combined overflow problem.
It's not a problem.
It, it is stormwater, but it's not stormwater that's going into the combined system.
It's already separate.
It's already separated.
Right, so everyone does?
So this is for, you have to have this, we have to use those ARPA funds by FY, end of FY '26?
Well, or, or actually, the first half of FY '27, by September of '26.
And, and you want this on the, on the warnings for a bond vote? This, this vote coming up?
Yeah.
Along with this budget that we just passed tonight?
Yeah, timing's not great, but like I said.
Could, do we have to do it then? I'm just, I just wouldn't want anything to hurt a yes vote for our budget. And if we've got somebody mad because we're doing this too, they might as well be mad twice. And I'm just wondering if we should do a special meeting on this rather than, we need, we need our budget to pass. I don't want anything letting, you know, getting in the way of that. And like, there's a potential that this could. It's 4.1 million we're asking for a bond.
That's three, really. The financial impact is three. The language will have to say three, but it'll say approve four of which three. You know, it's wastewater fund service. You know, I, I think actually, as I think about some of the things the voters have clamored for over the years, fixing the damn overflow is up there. I'm not saying it's up there with police, but.
I think the state's gonna make it to do it.
Yeah, but we don't have to do it. It is, I believe that's what we're proposing to do.
But the ARPA money can't go away. It has to be obligated.
Chip, what's the path look like if we did a special meeting? Is that an option?
I don't think it would interrupt our bidding plans too much if we waited a month. But it would start to.
Does everyone else think that? I mean, does anyone else think this is compromising for the budget? If not, then let's do it.
Yeah, I mean, it might push.
I wanna do it, I just don't know what the timing is of it.
I mean, it might push us into a time where bids start to, like, you don't really put a lot of projects out to bid in the summer.
I would point out, we had two bond votes in November. The back truck and the other stormwater project.
Yeah.
And the back truck is a, I mean, if we don't have the back truck, we're dead in the water. The stormwater project passed by 200 more votes in the back truck. So I think the beauty is.
I think if we communicate and help people understand the need for it and the potential impact on the lake.
Anybody that's driven through that neighborhood.
Or, yeah, and people that live down there and it's that park.
And it's being paid for on your water and sewer bill and also spread out amongst the users in the town. It's not being paid for on your property tax bill. Not that everyone's gonna understand that in the ballot box, but.
Can we, can you come, so we're, we're gonna meet in two weeks, I hope, to approve the, the budget, right? At some point?
Yeah.
Can we have a, do we know what a per cost household for 3 million is?
We could scrub that a little bit. You know, it's also the, we haven't talked about this yet, but the big swing in the numbers is gonna be depending on what we end up doing with contaminated soils, lightly contaminated soils, how many of them can be reused on other sites, how much needs to go to a landfill. So this, I mean, we probably need, need to have the conservative authorization for the full thing, but, you know, it's late. Why don't we take it under advisement? We'll noodle a little bit on it. There's some questions around, we can, there'll be an article in the paper. Josh, when you're listening later, be sure to cover this, and we can get some public input. See you on Wednesday.
He's on.
He's on.
Good.
Hi, Josh.
Josh, turn off, turn off the football game for a minute.
You know.
So we can still do it or not do it? We still have an opportunity to say yes or no before we have to get a vote. So I, I agree with that, let's get some interest.
But if we say no, we have to make sure we don't lose that money, the possibility of that money.
Well, I don't think we can, I, I think we're in a bid of a use or lose it situation here.
All the money, this is the only project we are ready to go.
You know, and the best way to drive up your construction costs is to be late to bid. And we're already pushing it by having authorization in March, but.
Two weeks we're gonna meet, we'll discuss it then.
Yeah.
And we'll still have time to.
Yeah, yeah.
Two weeks of running it back to you.
Yeah, yeah, no, it can't be done earlier than two weeks.
Yeah, it still sets it up for town meeting day.
We don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 12, we'll turn that over to Marie and Eric who did the interviews. Thank you for covering.
Well, we had three wonderful candidates that we interviewed for the Climate and Energy Committee. And they all brought some great ideas to the table, want to have some grant writing experience. And she has focused on climate change since her retirement, that was her goal. Another candidate is interested in teaching with self-sufficiency, sort of living off the land. And then the third candidate was interested in geothermal practices in the future, so.
And it was a master gardener.
Pardon?
And it was, it was a master gardener.
Yes, yes, that's right, too, I forgot that, yeah. So we liked all three, and we would like to appoint the three to the Climate and Energy Committee. So I'll do them individually.
Do they have the same expiration date?
No.
No, okay, no, they have different.
They have the numbers.
Yeah. So the first one is Janet Johnson. We'd like to appoint her to the Climate and Energy Committee with an expiration date of 1/31/2028.
No, I thought it was 14/28.
No, her, because there's a vacancy right now.
Yeah, okay.
Then the second one will be Elizabeth Spire with her term expiring on August 14th, 2028. Third one is Alex First with his expiration date also 14/28.
Cool, I'm gonna correct you, Marie. I think, I think in discussion, we talked about Alex would, would be appointed through 8/14/26. That gives him a year and a half.
Okay.
And then he would be reappointed on that one. The first two you mentioned would, because their term is so short, it's only seven months, both of those will be appointed out through 8/14/28 like you have them.
Okay, so Janet would be also?
Janet, Janet was, yes, Janet also. Because that, the fifth to fill that one seat is a year and a half away. Well, that gives them a lot of enough time to reuse it.
Yeah, and I know that we're late, I just wanted to make one comment that I've never actually sat through candidates that actually also did tourism, they get offer a committee. And these three all brought different needs and skills differently like this, so I think we all think that fits.
So we have a motion.
Second motion.
Motion from Marie, seconded by Eric. Any questions of the candidates, for the candidates or the interviewers? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So Janet, Elizabeth, and Alex are all pointed to their terms. You have those, Chip?
Yeah, 28, 28, 26.
Yep. We'll move on to item number 13 regarding the planning board.
That was, that was Chad, Trey, Trudy, and me, I think. So we had, were you on that too, Eric? Okay. We had four excellent candidates. We have our two returning candidates. And we were thinking with the help of Chip, because we liked them all, that we might wanna increase the size of the planning commission to seven. And that way, we can take all these candidates.
Oh, I was only hoping to be an alternate.
Mike go home. You're working late tonight. Is that still what we wanna do?
And that helps with something with a quorum too, correct?
Yeah.
That, there was another reason?
Well, it's always good to have an alternate. If it doesn't increase your board size any higher than it needs to be, but we, I think what we have are all members dedicated enough, but I'm not worried about meeting a quorum if we increase the size of the full number of seats on the board. And then, we would need the alternates so that the number of full seats is still an odd number.
So do I, Michael, you wanna become an alternate?
I am an alternate for all of it. And I feel that I'm one of the older members, I'm the oldest member. I'm beyond old. So I think that it's good to have younger people on the board who are going to be here in the community for a lot longer than I'll be here. So, but I do think I have something to offer, and both through my current employment, which will soon become a paralegal starting July 1, and through experience. Again, I, I think that it's good that the, the younger generation start taking a bigger role.
I think if Mike goes down to an alternate, we'll have to have two alternates, right? Because we can't have a sixth member board.
Well, no, we have, um.
Yeah, he is.
We'll have a five, right now, we have a five-member board with an alternate, and that includes Carl and Michael.
Yeah.
If we add the two new candidates, we just add, we just create a seven-member board and an alternate. It goes from six to eight.
Still a seven-member board.
Yeah, it's not wrong with that.
Just Michael and the same exact.
Yeah.
But we don't need two alternates, we'd need seven members and one alternate.
Yeah, yeah.
That's perfect.
And so we would, we would appoint everybody and just reappoint Mike as an alternate.
If that's what you wish.
So there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a vacancy.
And then there would not be a vacancy.
I made that motion.
We need to make a motion about making the board seven?
Uh, yeah, we could make, make a part of the motion.
Right, I'll make a motion that we increase the size of the planning commission to seven. We approve all the applicants. With one alternate, Mike being an alternate, expiring, expiring terms December 31, 2027 for all the new appointees.
A second. In a second, I have a question, your comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, and the motion passes. Moving on to item B, which is the appointment of Valmar Garibay and Emily Richards from the Dow Dow board. Eric, you want to take that one? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate it.
This one didn't go before, uh, this one did have interviews because Emily and Valmar are both incumbent.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a motion now. A motion of, Garibay and Emily Richards remain for another term, are they, they both same terms?
Yeah, and also wondering if, if KS Somendari could be promoted to a former. Cause there's a vacancy.
Do we have, can we do the, since he's on here for one, or does it matter?
No, he's on, man.
Sure.
I think so.
He was in, he was in the, he was in the notes with Chip earlier. Oh. All right, I'll make my motion, so all three are reappointed and appointed to those seats. They're open currently until, is it three years, two years plus?
Kamir could keep his 2026 term, and then Valmar and Emily would be new 2027. Yeah.
For a second? Tim, Tim Hopkins seconded it. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, passing, moving on to Andrew Eath of Design Advisory Board. Chip, is that a reappointment?
No, he's a new candidate, and he was interviewed by.
Me and Trudy.
Trudy and me.
Yeah.
You wanna take that?
Was so long ago.
It was.
No, go ahead.
He came in with an interest in seeing where we go from here, basically. Really kinda looking forward to the future as well as kind of, I, I felt like a lot of his background is gonna be, it's the interest of the DRB more, but I think DAB would be a good football for him to start in. So I think he'd be a good candidate for that.
He's already got a lot of community involvement, which is really good.
Yeah.
You getting a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Andrew Eath for Design Advisory Board.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, appoint Andrew Eath of Design Advisory Board. Just wanna roll, we'll come back, but let's do approval of minute meetings from 12/8/24.
Consider, sorry, motion to approve meeting minutes eight, 12/8/24.
Oh, second.
Motion took down, second from Trudy. All those in favor, if any, practical amendments?
I've seen, I don't know if I said this last time, it says commission members, previous notice of council members that have done our matters, but.
They interchangeable?
Katie, got that? Okay, uh, motion and a second to approve as amended, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, minutes for 12/8 passes.
Motion to approve warrants 12/31/24.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, approving warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Move into the mayor's report. Do you think I had? The Saturday, January 18th is Pink the Rink. If anyone's interested in going to the hockey rink to support breast cancer. Two high school games from 5:30 to 9:00, anyone who's interested. Dom, keep waiting for it to see lights on on Lake Street. Do we know when Offy, I know the parents will be?
Come talk to me, come again to it.
Just curious, no activity, seems like they're, they're close to being done, so.
Yeah.
Marty, can I catch you before you leave just about a few plowing items and whatnot? Just to tell you something. I think that's all I have. So, Chip?
Nothing in Ward one that I didn't bring up last time. Still some of the stuff in the parking lot up at the shopping center. And I'll mention it again, even though we did it during regular meeting, getting those white lines off the road on Seventh Street where the old parking is.
Okay, can you do that, Marty?
I don't know if it's the right time of year.
Well, our plow will do it. What they don't take out, we can do it in the spring.
Okay.
And listen. Thank you for making the effort to be here.
Yep.
We did, just so you know, we tabled the, the ethics.
Okay.
So, yeah, we hope they can take a look at it.
For some reason, they thought you were the ethics expert. On the other side, right?
Trudy?
I have had some questions on the landlord ordinance. I think that the article in the paper left people a little bit confused. So I just wondered about, do we just write it out? Or do we do like a question answer, kind of like editorial or something? Just so people can get a better sense of what it actually means and not what they're interpreting. Just from what they're reading, I don't know. That, that came up from a few different people. Many people really like it, including landlords, so that are in good standing with the city. Are there issues? How's, how's the parking garage doing? Because I've had some people say that they're not comfortable parking in there. Then they're parking on the streets, then they're getting tickets because they're not supposed to park on the street per their lease agreement. How, how are things in the parking garage maybe, are, are, are there a lot of issues?
I'm in the, I'm in the parking garage daily, and I'm not seeing any loitering or activity. And, and I get, I get that I'm a male. And maybe a little bit different for sure.
But overnight, have things been pretty decent?
Marty, I thought.
Yeah, we've had, I mean, there's been some car.
Yeah, we, I mean, there's been some car break-ins. We have a crew that works at night that goes through there on a regular basis. Haven't reported anything out of the ordinary other than that, I've heard about car break-ins, but.
And is that with unlocked cars? Not that any car breaking in is okay, but are, are like, I've heard like windows being smashed when people drive that way? Or is that not accurate?
They weren't locked, they weren't unlocked cars, they were locked car break-ins. You know, I.
And we have cameras.
We have cameras, we've got a heck of a lot of lights, we're getting a lot more. We've added a full-time person.
It's not the money budget we're talking about.
You know.
But the broken, the broken window incident happened, I think, one night, and two individuals that we had on camera had done damage in other places in the city. It happened that one night.
And they were caught? Okay, all right. And my last, my last thing is, there is next, no, January 30th, right here at City Hall, 5:30 to 7:30. Marie and I went this summer, I think, wasn't Marie? We went to the Substance Use Addiction Summit.
Yes.
Put on by Melinda White and Brad Ferling. We went down to the Essex to the Fairgrounds. They're bringing it to City Hall. It's from 5:30 to 7:30. I really like the setup of it because there'll be presenters and there'll be little tables of people that are providing services and supports in the community that you can learn about what they're doing, have conversations, see about ways that you can volunteer and get involved. So I did bring a little copy from the council. You want to have, it's right here, January 30th.
Coffee.
Coffees, coffees. Coffees, here for you. Okay, yeah, so it, it looks great, like CBOE will be there, Bart will be there, the Howard Center, Spectrum, Martha's Kitchen. I don't know. I might be one.
That's okay.
Yeah, so I told them that I got an email, I said, I'll share it with the council today and the community, so.
Okay, and then I'll go to you.
Nope, thank you.
Eric?
Quick question on the parking. Have we ever looked into the active lighting? I've seen that used in other, around the world, sidewalks, people walk down, it gets bright as they walk past, or here it is. But it helps with energy conservation, it helps with the active noise degradation, but then it also is kind of like, hey, I'm walking through here, it's something very bright. The more kind of discouraged from working in the operating, I don't know how it should cost, but I wasn't sure if it could come to something like that.
I heard like.
Yeah. The noise ordinance example, explaining what it's all about would be one of the examples I think would be good for like interviews. Unless it gets, I know this is too early, it hasn't followed ship yet, but I, I think this would be how I was thinking would be one of those things we want to explain through the back channel as well. We have our blog party Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00, so won't interfere with the hockey, hockey games, but.
Is it Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday. Yeah, 1:00 to 3:00, campfires game, chili bar, hot chocolate bar, and we have music. I say campfires, because we figured you have people that sit between them and enjoy the heat. Brain lawn chair, and warm clothes, but we're going to have some lawn games going on. There's snow, hopefully, we'll do snow painting and a penguin race and a couple other things. If there's enough snow, we'll do snowman competition. Two hours, it'll be whole trees themselves to play lead, and. So far, we have about 15 to the same going, so I'm excited.
And is it, can other people from other wards know what they want?
Definitely, yeah, we had people last time.
You do the work in our wards.
No, I'll be with it, yeah. Last time, we didn't do a lot of resizes, we were short on turnout, we had 50,000 people, so it's not helping. We're kind of helping bolster it some, I'm okay with it.
I'll put it on my neighborhood blog page.
When chili runs out, it runs out, I'm not refilling. The other one I have is a thank you to Public Works for the meeting that before we stop, the Ferris people really enjoyed it. Yep, it was within, I think, eight days, almost nine days of the meeting, so it was great. And, and you guys did put up the little always stop, which has helped. I know a couple people, good people in this room that didn't realize it, forgot it was, you know, and. So the four ways kind of like stands out a little bit too, so. But thank you, that's all I got.
To that point, Chip, one, one of our lights being activated on lower. What's the, what's the timeline? I think you were going to. Lashing at some point, right?
We need to wait until we can line the street, strike the street. And also, we're having the signal that Main and Newton replaced with new equipment that can talk to the system on federal. And then we'll probably activate the federal street system.
Timeline.
The spring, late spring, early summer.
Okay, thanks. Chad?
Just one, I have two quick things. My neighbor, Mrs. Kazivan, Marty, wanted to applaud you for how clean the sidewalks are. And also wanted me to complain to you that she thinks that the crosswalks on downtown Main Street are a little screwed up. I guess some of the buttons free sometimes. Sometimes it doesn't seem like it's synced right, these are her words. She's, she mentioned that in some areas that she's lived in the past, that there's ways to cover the buttons a little bit better. I don't know if that's the case.
We've had them all tested, he replaced two of the buttons two weeks ago. So maybe that's. So it might have been previous to that.
Maybe that's all of the problems.
He had eastern signals up here last week testing them, as well as the lights at the top of. Cool.
Last thing is, I've been getting emails for Kelly, things that I'm involved with in the rec department, and there's a bunch of rec events coming up. Still no which, sell up pretty quick, so if anybody in the community is interested, get on the website. Make sure you buy a ticket.
What, what event, we want to be more specific.
There's a winter carnival's huge one, and it looks like we're going to have snow this year, knock on wood. Yeah, there's the mother-son, father-daughter. All those things are big. Big draws.
I don't think my boys will go with me.
Chad, I think, I think it's great to train your constituents to comport with a good comment before they share a.
Well, so she's a nice lady.
We call it a hamburger.
Marie, what do you got?
Okay. And notice the other night's dragon over Main Street, that the middle portion of Taylor Park, the whole light seemed to be out, is that, is it?
GFIs.
GFIs.
With the weather, when you get moisture like that, they'll trip the GFIs. Those guys from first response, you have to get on and reset them.
I was going to ask that, because all, everything across the street's out, right? So at what point will we continue to fix them, or will we just start taking them down?
They start coming down in late February. We try to have them down before.
So up to that, up to that point, we're going to want to try to, you know, energize again.
Right, yep.
I was interested, it's like one string live in a tree, a big tree.
Yeah, we're going to unclog the tree. I don't know why that string is still. Check it out.
Sort of green.
Nope, that's okay. Corner of Cedar and Lake. The tenant there has a campsite that has been there through the summer. The lawn probably isn't any bigger than the table here. But it's progressed continuously. Fire pit, firewood, or a tent, a hammock, a tent at one point on the property. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done.
But camping or picnicking?
It's just a little yard with all the stuff put in a little space.
Yeah, there's like a corner of an empty space.
Yeah.
With a.
We'll take a look at it and see.
Campsite, it's just slightly, and I don't know if anybody else saw it, but Channel 3 did a piece on our landlord ordinance.
And they put that person in it?
Yes. Basically, they were all down.
I can see that.
My house was on it. They were all down in my area. And that was one property that was also featured.
There's a, there's a railing around it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only yard they have.
Yeah, oh, yeah. They use it too.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, at least there's no garbage in the yard. Like, I mean, it's, there's that, because there's other yards that have this.
Well.
It's a smart issue, too.
And then, Marie?
Just my last thing, that big young, the old Black Creek Market building, what's the status on that?
I'm with Marty or Chip?
No, I talked to Richard, he's having a problem getting his contractor. We've got an agreement in place, but the last I spoke to him about a month and a half ago was his contractor was in the middle of a big job, so.
Well, that's awesome.
Noel, what do you got?
Nothing.
Nothing?
They find over my part of the woods.
Just you.
So I'd just like to point out that we were, we were on time.
It's on Noel's report, I believe.
No, it's on Mr. Hawkins' show, though.
You threw me off by 15 minutes. Thank you for speaking, you know?
Not you, Marty.
Yeah, not you, Marty. Hopefully, we, you found it enlightening?
Yeah, if you're adjourning, I just wanted to introduce myself. But I guess I can be on camera too. I'm Laura Aishen, and I'm the co-chair of the Climate Committee. I'm not sure that I've met every one of you, so I just wanted to sort of pop in and say hi as well. Thank you, nice to meet you.
Laura's in Mr. Hawkins' ward, right?
Yes, that's right.
Right, right, or messenger?
Yeah, I'm on Messenger, I'm here at the senior center.
Yeah. Oh, you're not on, I thought you were on the corner of Messenger.
No.
No, a different corner.
Thank you for coming and staying. Josh, will you go back to the football game? Thank you. Kate, hopefully you found everything education.
Kate will be at the summit.
Okay, good, we'll be back.
Kate will be at the summit.
Motion adjourning?
Second.
Ooh. Give it to me.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
You are adjourning?
I see the slow motion.